Alright, so reference is seven P M, February fifth, twenty twenty four. And we're in a canine walk. Loosen this up a little bit. Oh, there she is. Oh, there she is. Beautiful dog. Officer Valkyrie here.
This is her, this is Valkyrie.
Hi Valkyrie.
For short. Uh, no, ooh. Yeah, she's, she's kinda spicy, so I typically don't do any kinda show and tell stuff. She, uh, we've had her for, I've had her for a little over a year, we got her in January, and then we certified. Certified end of April, so we've been on the road together since May, it's the May first until now. Um, and she's a heck of a dog.
Yeah, lots of energy.
Lot of energy, um, and she's got a really good note on her, so.
We heard.
In the, so basically what she does, she's a patrol dog, so she's not a drug dog at all, so she just tracks.
Sorry, sorry.
She just tracks. Okay, lay down, that can be your pacifier, off, off. Uh, tracks, uh, fleeing suspects, so she is basically like drug dogs, they can smell the odors of drugs, so she smells the odor of fresh human odor. So she's trained just on fresh human odor, so she does tracking, apprehension, and article finds, so if somebody throws a piece of evidence when they're running, like, she finds my car keys all the time. Our longest successful track so far is just a little over a mile, so a suspect ran, and we got there about fifteen minutes after they had run, and we went on a mile-long track where she just used her nose and we're basically going the same footsteps to where they went, and found that person hiding down by a creek.
Did they ever ask you to help them in FBI if somebody walks away or?
That was something, yeah, I haven't been in contact with those folks over there, if there's any kinda walkaways. Um, I have not yet gone and employed over there for anything like that, but I told them absolutely, if you guys have any need for that, then I'm all for it. She can also track, um, like civil with like missing endangered, like kids, or, so with her, I would just put a muzzle on her if we're gonna be tracking for something like that, and she knows how to work in a muzzle and still track. She doesn't like it as much, she kinda shakes her head a little bit, and when she's working, but she can still track, um, even wearing a muzzle, so that's.
Well, that's just excellent, like if a kid gets lost.
Kid gets lost, or any kind of like disability, autistic kid or anything like that walks away from the house, we can go track for that.
How about people with Alzheimer's?
Absolutely, I, all the time, I mean luckily a lot of them are wearing those Project Life-Saver bracelets, uh, which are super helpful, but, um, yeah, tracking dogs, she's ninety-eight percent a locating tool, a lot of people think that, oh, it's a patrol dog, they, you know, they're just a bite dog. That's part of her function, she knows, that's part of the game for her, but ninety-eight percent of the time, she's just basically taking us to where this person is hiding, because ninety-eight percent of people give up when dogs start parking at them, so.
Especially a dog that like thanks.
Yeah. Cause we have eighteen, in the timeframe that we've been on the road, we have eighteen total captures or arrests, and two of them didn't give up. So out of eighteen, only two of them basically didn't surrender. Um, so that just goes to show that sixteen of those people gave up, were arrested, you know, peacefully, and didn't have any kind of an issue, and no use of force, so they're a big use of force deterrent as well. I mean, if we don't have a dog like this that has, you know, the option to apprehend somebody, it's just basically a taser, our hands, and it's really just, can you not destroy that? Typically I don't let her chew one.
Did you train her or did you go through training?
So I went through four hundred hours.
Oh wow. Was it Jennifer that trains the police dogs for Salem?
No, I went up through, uh, I went to Washington County and Hillsborough Patrol School, so there was five dogs in our school. Um, there was two McMindle dogs, and then us, and then Washington County agencies that were in that, and so it was eleven weeks long, and then our last week was our conference, there's two, uh, conferences through the Oregon State Police Canine Association, that's who, which certifies her, that's the, um, body that basically sets the standards of what makes a patrol dog, and you have to pass the standards every single year, so, we're coming up on that in March, so we'll have to go take those standards again, uh, but it is intensive. Definitely the hardest thing I've, I've done in my seven and a half years in law enforcement, but the funnest, I mean, I gotta, I gotta basically take a buddy to work with me every day, get to play with a dog, and there's a lot of training, though, I mean, the four hundred hours to get certified, and then four hours a week is like our maintenance training, on Thursdays we do four hours, but every shift that I'm with her, I mean, I'm doing, like when I don't have a call, I don't have, I have more responsibility than somebody who doesn't have a dog, and it can get kind of frustrating, because she's just like us, like where we don't do something and practice something, we deteriorate in that, right, so I have to get her out of the car.
Does she live with you?
Yes, she lives with me, uh, I have a barn right next to my house, and she built a big old hawthaw canine quarters. So she lives pretty, pretty luxury, uh, but they stay separate from the family, it's like my wife, um, my wife, I have a little kid and another one on the way, and, um, she's good with my wife, uh, even good with my little eighteen-month-old, uh, daughter, um, she has a pretty good on and off switch at home versus, but, it's supposed to be kept kinda hay or working, this is what she wants to do too, I mean, these working dogs are off. Yeah, that's what she lives for, um, and she's a, yeah, I couldn't ask for a better dog for, uh, I've been wanting to do this basically since I got into law enforcement. Uh, I worked for Sherwood Police Department before I came over here, and that's where I did all my canine training and decoying in the bite suit and stuff like that, so. I've been wanting to do it for quite a while, and I couldn't ask for a better partner, he's pretty awesome.
He just adores you, because like, look, staring at you.
You are, um, a contractor with the city of Sherwood.
Yes.
He is here at the evening.
Yep, so I work Wednesday through Saturday, uh, from four to two, and any doggies that we have down here, um, yeah, she's, she's on it, and it's, it's been fun.
It's kinda like we get an extra deputy.
Yeah, yeah, really, I mean, searching wise, I mean, I can't remember what the statistic is, but it's something crazy about how many human deputies it would be to have to search an area versus having a dog for her nose, I mean, she found my wallet in my house on my property, so. I was mowing in the summer, and she was pretty new, and we were still in canine school, and we were just going over like article searches and stuff like that, and I couldn't find my wallet for life, and the next day, I'm like. I retraced all my steps, and I'm like, I got a locating tool, I'm gonna get her out of the kennel and see. Sure enough, uh, she searched the whole, basically, uh, probably two to three acres, and then went over, uh, underneath my lean-to where my tractor was parked, and she laid down, I couldn't see her, and I went back there, and when I got off the track, my wallet fell, and went underneath the mowing deck, and she was lying right there, her nose right on, and so. It was pretty cool to see it actually work, because I was still, I was still in canine school, uh, so that was pretty cool to see, and then just over the last seven months, seeing that find people and track people, and just seeing how that's come to fruition is pretty cool.
Yes.
Well, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Great to meet you too.
Yeah, you can take a photo. So she's looking, so she has different commands, so like, if I were to say, find it right now, uh, that to her means article, so don't find something that's laying out there with human odor on it, so just because she's trained on human odor, she's trained on anything human odor-wise, so anything in my pocket, my wallet, has a whole bunch of human odor on it, so she's just looking around the area for that scent of human odor, um, and like, tracking, uh, stopa is what she does for tracking, so she'll put her nose on the ground and start looking for human odor footsteps, and it's not just the odor, there's a lot, like when somebody runs through bark dust, runs through grass, they're disturbing the earth, it's like crushed earth as well, so they're disturbing all the grass, and they're disturbing bark dust.
Somebody spilled your bark.
So it's, it's different than like, like Bloodhound, like, or like movies, you'll see movies where it's like, hey, here's a, here's a article clothing, smell this and go find that odor. She doesn't do that, so she just tracks any fresh human odor, so it can get difficult, I love when we, I love the sheriff's office rural tracking, because Yama County is very rural, so it's like somebody crashed the car, or fleas from us crashes, and they run through a farmer's field. There's really not any other, uh, odors out in that field, so it's, for her, it's pretty easy to pick up the odor, city tracking can be tough, if you're tracking at two o'clock in the summer by the Plant Fitness in McMindle, there's a lot of, a lot of odor, but these dogs are pretty good about scent discriminating. People who are running from the police typically give off a lot of adrenaline and fear scent, because they're, I mean, they're running from us, so they're pretty good about picking that odor up, and it's like, oh, I like this smell better than just average gel walking on the sidewalk, um, but city tracking is more difficult, for sure. Any other questions? Lucky you.
How old is she?
Uh, she just, just turned two, just turned two, she's short, she is a, when we got her, she was forty-six pounds, she's filled out and matured, uh, she's seventy-three now. And that's about where I'd live, best is custom fit to her, so I can't let her, I can't let her put on any more pounds, because it's about maxed out. But yeah, somebody stole her legs from her, because she's real short.
Does she have a particular favorite meat? Does she ship a favorite meat, that type of meat, yeah?
Uh, she eats, uh, a kibble, uh, Winco, not Winco, Wilco, we, oh, Wilco donates a bag of food, uh, a month, uh, which is super generous, and then, so she eats pretty much the best, uh, dog food I can buy off, from, uh, Wilco, but she does get some table scraps here and there, if, if she finds somebody, or she has a really good arrest, then I'll. Uh, to something, I think her first capture ever, uh, she had the old, uh, trashy McDonald's cheeseburger. And she loved that.
Well, they make dog, uh, very clean. My goodness, my goodness.
Mayor, I think the dog is out of order.
Recording in progress.
Watch. Good girls.
Thank you deputies.
Okay, it's fun to call, this is one of the, of the state numbers. Today is February fifth, twenty twenty-four, and it is seven thirteen P M. A little bit of a late start to start because of that, um, meeting and that, okay, so, uh, roll call please, Elon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Here.
Acuff?
Here.
Buckles?
Here.
McElroy?
Here.
Heber?
Here.
George?
Here.
Hodgins?
Here.
All right, so, uh, we're gonna start our meeting with a, a presentation from Brent Keller, Senior Forester with Mason Bruce and Gerard Incorporated.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Right here? Well, thank you, last fall, I was out with Gary, uh, looking at your, your Stony Mountain, uh, property, and he'd been on the tour of the city of Mimbale Watershed, my name is Brent Keller, I work for Mason Bruce and Gerard, and we manage municipal properties for, uh, one sixty years, we, we manage City of Mimbale's watershed, uh, City of Haylen's, City of St. Helens, Manzanita, Seaside, um, and so a lot of, a lot of experience working with city properties, and after that tour, that watershed tour, that Gary was on, Mimbale, he thought, hey, you should come out and look at our property, so we spent a part of the day out there, and had some ideas that I'd be thought about doing this, uh, silviculture, there's potential harvest here, I thought, well, right, you guys have, have a proposal on some activities, and then I got to thinking about, um, there can be some pitfalls to that, to just say, get with public works, or get with the city and do like a one-off project, and then questions start to be raised, well, what's the plan, what are you doing out there, and well, it can be kind of, um, some holes in the thinking there, and I thought, really, the best place to start with looking at that property, even though I did see some things, okay, we could do that, and some specific treatments, is to develop, it's just a simple management plan, so you have the chance to look through, okay, what are the goals and objectives and for that property, and develop a document that you can refer to, then if the public asks, hey, what are we doing out there, okay, well, this is all in our plan, it's been developed and looked at and approved by council, and with, uh, with some level of public understanding that that's happening and that kinda thing, so. So I just put together this simple memo, um, with that proposal in mind, and I mean, of course, management plan, the key elements are just, some of it can be for reference, also for guidance, for you, you know, typical plan would include the property history, property description, goals and objectives, some maps, serial photos, a look at fire risk, uh, security issues, and maybe some general scheduled plans of action in terms of silviculture, road maintenance, those types of things. And like I said, that would be developed in the context of, it would be different for the city that has this property for the purpose of water production, it would be for warehouse development management plan, or somebody has twenty acres behind their farm, or, so if you're looking at it within your context, do look at page two, I kinda talked about, in the development of, of the plan, looking at, you know, maybe just generally for that property, your priorities, your water production, forest health, fire mitigation, of course, it's under one's mind, more now than ever, I think, with some potter sappers and after twenty twenty, and there can be other things too, we could come up with, and we wanna discuss these, um, elements before the plan is finalized. You know, there is some level of income opportunity there, um, periodically, that's clearly, um, the least of the priorities out there as far as.
Are you talking like selective logging in that?
Yeah, there's, and there's been some harvesting for, of course, they're fairly small property, so you're gonna look at, it's gonna be pretty periodic. So that's the kinda context to look at, the steps in developing this would be, you know, I'd like to stay out there, we kind of looked at some things in general for a few hours, but I wanna spend a, a day, um, walking through the entire property, visiting each stand, developing a map of the timber types, recording the age of species, stocking density, um, of timber stands there, forest stand, um, and look at the roads and security, and, and look at, uh, silviculture needs, there's some nice plantations there that you're gonna wanna do some pinning on, uh, for maintenance here, uh, at some point, there's a pretty, uh, flexible horizon for standing, you don't say, well, that needs to be done, if it doesn't get tomorrow, done tomorrow, it's not like, not getting your hand bailed, or it's, you know, you've lost the opportunity, so there's some, there's some time to work with that, and there'd be, and whether or not you harvested or not, if you didn't know, could we have this available, potentially, um, or, but that's there, I, I think some of that, I thought after that, the day we had out there, I think a lot of that older merchant timber there is there, because I think that's where your water lines are, in a lot of places, I thought later, I think it's not all there still, but I think that's why, so. So that'd be the kinda thing to do, um, initially, and then would develop a report, um, to bring to the council that could approve, that's what I recommend. Rather than just delivering the public works, there's your plan, it'd be nice to review that, I could go back and even, um, make some edits to that, and just get it kind of approved into the records. This is our plan for that property, so.
Um, it's come up in council before that there's some, and I don't know the name of the bugs on the water, do you do natural predator type work, where you would bring something in? What were the, the names of them?
Oh, that's at the sewer lagoons.
Oh, I know what you're like.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm a forester, so that'd be more of a, sounds like a biologist's question, although Mason Bruce and Gerard does have environmental services arm of the company, but, and everything's interesting, that would be interesting to look at, the context of stuff. Is it at the Stony Mountain, we're doing, this is different.
Yeah, yeah, I got it mixed up, sorry.
Different kind of treatment. Yes, sir.
Couple meetings back, the, uh, resident came and said, uh, he thought we had some sort of boring process, and it wasn't just the ash bug that was forming the trees, all the trees seem to have extra holes that didn't belong, have you seen, are you bored or anything like that?
I'm, I've not, I don't know, mostly I thought it was fur out there, I could seem to be real healthy when we were out there, so, not sure. Could have been seeing sap suckers, or, I, I'd have to see it, I'm not sure.
It just seemed odd, because he said it was all the trees, not just the ash trees, we know have an issue with.
Was it in the conifer, or the hardwoods, or?
He said he saw it, he was walking here, so anything he saw.
Along the road?
Yeah. Probably fur, more or less, yeah.
The box eagles, he didn't think that there was very many of them either, and so he had just said, walking into town, but I have since learned from the Department of Forestry that the box eagles kinda go in heads and flows in winter seasons.
Right, like this.
Yes, did you have a question, Max?
Yes, um, if we decide to approve this, will you work closely, um, with the city to help develop the reservoir?
Now, I guess you'd need to explain, what is, is the reservoir under development? Certainly, so that's the kinda thing we'd wanna have in our plan, like, um, to, I guess you'd wanna work within the context of the plan.
Sure, within the complex of the plan, but you, you were, you talked about the reservoir, doing inventory, and talked about the roads, and um, record the age of the species, and what we have, um, I just wondered if any of that is needed in our reservoir, um, completion, if you will be a part of that?
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
And would this thirty-eight hundred dollar fee of not to exceed cost include that?
Sure, is that, what's the, um, what's the schedule there, or what's the, what is the plan there, is it?
So currently?
Is it double inside, I see what's currently there.
Okay, so for, for now, that's what, that's what's there now, so we have a long way to go, um.
Is it like a, it's a process over time, or?
Yes.
Essentially, the goal is to have Stony Mountain, um, reservoir, the reservoir that you saw, be hooked up to the city for water, drinking water, and it is not at this time. And so our city engineers are finishing up our water master plan, and then they're gonna engage in a facility study after that, hopefully, if the council approves that process, but they'll engage in a facility study, and so I don't know how forestry, but, and the facility study will overlap, but I think that's essentially the question at hand.
That could be something in the plan we put in, okay, here's the plan, there must be plans for that, tying that together.
There are old plans, and the, and this is about the process of actually, because they ran out of money after they built it, and so now is, now is the time that this council would like to address that, and to get it all going, and get us in the right, you know, footsteps, and to start to be able to have enough of a project to ask for money, right?
Okay.
So very early in the process, but. We'll introduce you to the city engineers.
That'd be great, and that'd be a kinda get in the plan, in the context of what we're doing, um.
Depend on that, thank you.
That'd be like a future plans section of management plan.
Any other questions?
So, on the hundred and twenty-eight acres, you're gonna go in there and kinda do an inventory and all this stuff, and do the great scheme of things, and this thirty-eight hundred dollars is probably just for this big one-time inventory research, correct?
Yeah, and then I'm gonna, you know, if you're deliverable, you'll get a bound report, electronic report with maps.
If you come back then, um, is it, your intention like maybe to come back and check on it every so many years, or you do a yearly check on the inventory, or, and if it is, because the first one, it seems like the first time out, you know, is like the big one, and then I would think if you were coming back to revisit those trees and their inventory, it wouldn't be as much, because you, the big expense is the first time out, like this one, and then would you be coming back to request, like, hey, you want me to go out and check out your inventory?
Well, that's, I, that's, I reckon, the, the thirty-eight hundred is mainly just for the report, I could come back once or something, that, you know, that may be something to consider, I have had folks actually want to pin that down, so, okay, let's set up, we're gonna get so much of a fee a year or two, have an official look at the property, rather than me saying, well, I'll just stop by when I'm in the area, and then maybe you do, maybe you don't, maybe you spend a certain amount of time, maybe you write something up, maybe you don't, so that might be something to consider, that, hey, could you, could you look that over annually, or?
But I mean, it wouldn't be at that, we just had a thing about expenses. And so my deal is just like, if they were to come back and do a reinspection of maybe some timber that might need to be filed, because, you know, it's time for it to go, uh, I'm sure it wouldn't still be at the same, you know, you spend two hours up there, they're gonna send us a bill for thirty-eight hundred bucks, and that's, that's what I'm giving to.
No, 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 this is just the one-time for this.
I needed to hear you say that, sorry.
That's just for this, just my fieldwork and everything it takes to, to put the plan together.
Okay, thank you.
And I could give you, um, maybe it's a separate discussion on, instead of rates or something, but, yeah, for a couple hours, that would not be, not be much.
Thank you, do you, Mayor, do you think, or the council, do you think it would be helpful to hear maybe a couple minutes about the work that he does at the McMindle Watershed? Like when he's out there, out and about, because I saw him in action, so I'm realizing the rest of you did not, huh?
Yeah, so the problem is, like, what your, what your, what your activities look like when you work for them?
So we've managed that since nineteen sixty-five. I'm trying to make the story as short as possible, so in the fifties, they, they got a contractor, Ralph Rains, which was a local logger, to salvage the old growth out of there, the, the history of the property is it was all burned, and then the sucker burned, and then partially burned, and one of the tillow roots burned, a small piece of it, which is amazing, it's nowhere near tillow root, but that's how big that fire was, that, um, so then nineteen sixty-five, they decided, hey, let's do, let's get a higher forestry firm, and put together a plan, and, and start doing a program, and so at this point, um, we harvest about four and a half million feet a year out of there, um, on like a seventy, eighty-year rotation. So it's, it's, um, it's been a great, there's two, two big reservoirs there, they're a great, um, program for the city, it's where it's created that income stream, and extremely low, um, water rates. A lot of that's been used, I don't know exactly how the money part of things work, um, and I've learned more and more about the water system over the years, just again, trying to work in the context of that, but mostly focused on the forestry side of stuff, um, we have, in terms of that four and a half million feet, we have certain, like, self-imposed rules on, on harvest unit sizes, on how, like, the, the state will require like three or four years of greenup. See, a plant, you have to have your trees like four feet tall on a hundred and twenty acre unit before you can cut next to it, and what we have, like enhanced screen up rules, we're looking for more like ten to fifteen feet tall before you, so we're moving around the watershed a lot, to just minimize the impact in terms of soils and, and that, um, so it's the, the way, and a lot of what's different there than what you see with the industry, that's one thing, we have, we have smaller harvest areas, way, way smaller than, by law, you can cut to a hundred and twenty acre clear cut, that'd be like three to four little clear cuts for us, and we're moving around, creating openings on a real gradual basis around the landscape, um, and we harvest a lot of our own seed, but we're trying to do that from, see, as you go, as time goes on, you're planting even with trees from nurseries, and we, we gather a lot of seed over the years, we're still trying always gather the seed from those original trees that are hundred fifty years old out there, so, we have in, in, um, enhanced buffer rules on the streams, so we're not as aggressive there as you could be with industry, we have limited, um, operating seasons, and sometimes that can go over, it's not perfect world with operators and, and schedules, but in general, it's May to September is the operating season, and so no one's out there in the winter, you know, a lot of dirt roads, and not everything is rock and set up for, you know, all weather logging, and which is a good fit with water production there, so, of course, we're kinda set up and geared as if the water is a. Of course, we're kind of set up and geared as if the water is being treated. As if, so the water, in theory, you could send it to town unfiltered. And you wouldn't have issues with turbidity and. You know, just pollutants in the water. Another property we're working on, also, um, currently, I don't think of this, this is the clients, because they're brand new, but we're doing a management plan for the Nestwood Water District. They're looking at writing a grant to try to buy their watershed, that's anything, but Mimville is they own their, pretty much their entire water catchment area. They, they own completely, so they can control those on their, like, water area, um. And that's what Nestwood's looking to do, and so we're writing a management plan, so when they go to get the grant, the grant people, so what, if you've got the grant, well, how would you manage it for water? So they can see that, so we're writing, we're currently working on that. City of Bramford, which I think is one of just a couple places in the country now, that's not under the federal standard. For pretty water. They're on the unfiltered status, and so they have to have a pretty detailed, um. Serious management to maintain that status, so that's interesting, even though there's a, like, City of Portland. We recently did a project, we're looking at the forestry impacts to their treatment plant that they're just now building, they, they haven't. Attreated water forever, just straight out of the bull run, so, um. So we've worked a lot of watersheds, and that's, that's the high points of Mimville there, but. A lot of different techniques, we don't, the first thing I usually say on the retreats, we don't spray out here. And everybody relaxes, and I can pretty much say anything, anything I want after that. But yeah, we don't, any, the soil culture you see on the ground there is done without herbicides, um, or pesticides, so. It's more costly, it's a lot of hand work. But you can do it, I've had timber companies out there looking at, okay, what if someday, spr- spraying up ban, how would we do this? And it's a little intimidating, it is really costly, and I don't know, in the business sense. It would impact your, your bottom line a lot, but we have accomplished everything out there without these herbicides. So you use different techniques for that. And of course, with your plantations, if you get overrun with brush quickly, and we're, we're constantly looking at socking and making sure that first five years were. Intensively managing these plantations and getting them going again, because the logging's a lot of fun and everything, but. The real satisfaction's driving by ten years later, and, oh, you got a new, new stand of trees going, and, and you're. The cens feel like they're home free, so.
So, uh, go ahead, Max. Um, will you also be checking our transition lines, the, the, the forestry area there, I don't know how, how long it is, but as part of that, I know some of it is. I don't know how long it is, but I just wondered if this plan would be, would include that also?
What do you think, that's, is this underground lines, or?
No.
You mean transmission lines, like for power, or?
No, so there's, um, well, she's talking about some of the water lines that were currently do bring some water into town, because they're from the stream line.
Yeah, that's, that's, I think some of that area is not harvested, it's not cut, and that's why I think I thought later. Yeah, anything in that area would be recorded as part of the plan, part, it's sort of part of the inventory, whether it's trees or water lines or infrastructure.
Yeah, there's, did you have a question?
So when you define your management plan, what does that involve, I'm just curious, what, how? Do we implement it, or do you implement it?
So it would look at stuff like who your neighbors are, how they're managing their property, that, that was the thing after the twenty twenty five. What, I don't know what that happened to me, what can we do, and say, well, you can do a lot, but it's ten percent humidity, fifty mile an hour winds, um. But you can do some things, it's just like people will fire wise their home, like, not have trees within so far, if I live on, basically, it's just a house, it's timberland, so we have gravel. Flower beds, we don't have bark, and, you know, the types, those types of things, in terms of forestry, that's what's critical to have healthy. Healthy stands too, uh, that can be a real big part of mitigating fire, in terms of not having a lot of fuel out there, um.
Like dead wood, dry wood, yeah.
And, um, those sorts of things, so if there's opportunity to do. Harvesting or create, if you determine, I don't remember seeing it out there, but if you determine, but some properties, they're right next to Forest Service, like, why don't we create our own little fire line, fire break? Along the property, so there's some, you can kind of control what comes onto your property there, the types of things you'd look at.
And that means a, a swath of bare land, is that what a fire?
That's what a lot of folks do, yeah, or started doing more of. Or you might, like, at Mimville, we have, I can't remember exactly, but it's gotta be a mile or better of transmission line running through the property. So we recently thought, well, let's shift all our har, didn't quite fit into our plan, because we like harvesting the older timber that's declining more, but. These are a little young, well, from out there, younger stands, these were like sixty instead of a hundred, let's, let's cut. Well, let's do a harvest along those lines, so now after a couple of years, that's virtually all been wiped out, and. And then it's replanted, of course, but then we went forward, for those areas, instead of having eighty year rotation. We do more like forty or fifty, like what industry does, just because those trees are. They'll be shorter, more firm, um, and less likely to fall into the lines going forward, so that's the kinds of things you can edge towards.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much.
Well, thanks, so. Read through this, I guess, um. Yes, I was running, I didn't want to make a mistake. Uh, I know, I'd like to. Have a little discussion first on. The options here that we've been recording, so that we can obviously be a little clearer on, um. Which one stands for what? I'd like to make a motion if we. Move forward with creating a forestry management plan with Mason Bruce and Giller Incorporated, uh, they cost not to exceed three thousand hundred dollars.
So.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Jim?
What's fun, what was come out of the water?
The water fun.
All water.
Hundred percent. Okay, anybody else?
We have a motion on the second, any further discussion, all in favor?
You unanimous?
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, thank you. So, uh, next, I know it was having on your agenda, but, um, and this is all my fault, you've gone had this set up perfectly, but I failed to have a comment period, go back in, so I would just like to do that. So is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment at this time? Is there anyone online? I am not seeing anyone, so. I guess not, so I guess we will skip, we've, um. Don't have any commenters, we won't even read those, okay? So now we're gonna move on to the perks of this, uh, session topic. The first one is gonna be about the solace of time place and manner restrictions. This is located on page two, five through forty six. All right, so you know what I thought we could do, is, uh, hopefully everybody read this, and they got their packets delivered. All right, so what I thought we would do is just see where we are, and we have these options, and let's, let's just kind of read through each of the options. And the, and, um, and then see, let's just kind of see if we have a consensus or not, and if we, if we don't, then let's have further discussion, so. The first option is do nothing. Uh, six. Okay, so if we do nothing, um, then it will. The solace like. Uh, I keep forgetting what the R's is.
Solace I haven't related business.
Nice key at the bottom.
Oh, great, yeah, thank you, that's right, yeah, okay, will be regulated for some of the Oregon Health Authority regulations and general zoning restrictions of the city. And there's no cost for that, so we just carry on, we don't do anything, and then we just go with whatever Oregon Health Authority tells us we must do. And so one other thing, so on the previous page, on page five, it says, the Oregon Health Authority regulations state. That solace I haven't related businesses are not allowed within a thousand feet of schools and are prohibited in all exclusively residential zones. So that, no matter what, that'll be the case, okay.
And the one thousand foot left is one of the two matters.
Oh, okay, all right.
This one?
The other one includes parks, or parks, yeah.
The second option is the city council takes heed on time, place, manner restrictions. And so, uh, the planning commission.
Public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, and then city council, and another public hearing, and then, uh, city council ordinance is created. Allowance. Of solace I haven't related businesses subject to OHA regulations and adopted time, place, manner regulations, so that would then. Take whatever OHA says and add it what the council says, and so the cost on that would include attorney fees, city planners, uh, staff, and publication costs for the. Notices and the hearing and like that, so that's option two. Option three, uh, the city council sends it to the planning commission and comes back to the city council for approval, so we, so we just say, here, uh, planning commission.
It's here.
Let us know what you think, and get back to us on that, so that goes planning commission, public hearing, city council. Public hearings, uh, city council ordinance, once that all gets discussed out, so. This is, uh, allowance of solace I haven't related, uh, businesses subject to OHA regulations and adopted time, place, manner regulations, which are put in place by. You know, with planning commission and then approved by the council, and the cost on that is city attorney, city planner, staff, and, and publication costs. Okay, and the fourth one is city council passes an ordinance, referring ballot measure for ban. So let's say no, we don't want it anywhere at any time, okay, then the city council, um. Creates an ordinance, they publish the proposed ballot language, they put the ballot measure, uh, that's promoted on the November twenty twenty four ballot. So, um. Solace I haven't related businesses are then prohibited if it passes, prohibited within the city if ballot measure passes. Solace I haven't related businesses are allowed pursuant to OHA regulations if the ballot measure fails, so if the, if we put it on the ballot and it fails, then we revert to. More or less a first one, yeah, the first option, where it's just, I don't know, thirty, and the cost on this are city attorney, staff, publication costs, and county ballot charges. If I had to get an estimate on that today, it'll be hard to say, I guess, but it could be a couple of times. So, one says do nothing and go with the, uh, OHA, and then, um. And then this one says, take it to the people, ask them what they want to do, but it'll cost a little bit more, and that would create a permanent ban. Or not, not permanent, but.
It's not permanent, two year, two a sunset, so.
That's.
No, this would be a permanent ban.
Permanent.
It would be, thank you.
This would be.
The rest of, some of this package was written for twenty twenty two, so if you read all through that, you might, oh, it's, I said, I did the same thing, I was quick, I meant to do your man.
I was confused by that, okay.
All right.
Can I, may I ask a question, though? So the other options, the first three options, would still be a two-year with a sunset? Because that's what it sounded like when I was reading it.
No, we are nearing the end, well, we're not nearing the end, we're thirteen months into our twenty-four month moratorium. So at the end of this year, our moratorium will expire.
So that's what the two years is about, and after that is permanent, okay, thank you. Okay, so. Let's just, just try to, just get an overall view, I just, to see how the council is feeling, so how many people would like to do nothing and let OHA lead the way? Okay, how many people want to go through, um. Going to the planning commission and public hearings, and the city council public hearings, and then create an ordinance, and then, and then go through all that, that's kind of, I have two.
No, I, I agree.
Option two.
It's three.
If we go to the.
Not a three, just like all of them.
Two, three have the same steps.
They do, don't they, so that could be, okay.
One involves the planning commission, one.
One does.
Yeah, so you said planning commission, so that's, yeah.
They both would involve the planning commission holding a hearing, the difference between those two is who is undertaking in, on the front end. The work to draft the time, place, manner restrictions.
Okay, so is, uh. I guess I could just, you know, is anyone in favor of two or three?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm Tyler.
Sure.
If the council chooses to go with the number two, uh, option here. And we chose to go through, use one of the ordinances such as DAVs, which I looked through and I preferred personally, um. Would that help cut down on cost?
It, it would make it more efficient than starting from scratch, certainly, I strive to never ever start from scratch.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and how many are in favor of, um, the fourth option, where we put it on the ballot and let people decide? One, two, three, four. Okay, four, okay. Okay, so we do have, you know, we're not unanimous, but it does look as if. Uh, the council is intending toward, uh, putting it on the ballot, so, you know, as we read, as everybody who read saw that, uh, Sheridan. Voted, it was a fifty to forty seven, uh, last time, and, um, and I don't know, uh, in light of. Measure one, that might, they might even have a wider range now, uh, go ahead, Kim.
Uh, I was gonna ask if it'd be like, kind of, um, makes particular two options, like say, we do develop a plan. And say, okay, this is the vote, you vote yes, this is what will happen, you vote no, it's banned completely. So we could go through the planning commission steps and all that, and say, if this, if you vote yes on this, this is what will happen, if you vote no on this, it's banned completely.
Just to clarify, a yes vote would be for a moratorium, so it would just be the opposite of.
Opposite, I said.
How you phrase it, but, yes, we could, option four is, can be added to, well, I guess we can't really add doing something with doing nothing, but. We can still work through time, place, manner restrictions, and refer a potential permanent ban to the council.
Because it would, it would be nice to, same with you, like, part of the, we would have a plan, as, if they do vote yes, as opposed to just letting OHA, um, tell us.
Yes.
Which we still don't, do we know what OHA?
It sounds like it's pretty minimal, uh, if, if I've got this right, I think there's more than added, I think I heard that, um, so OHA's regulations state that. Uh, solace I haven't, uh, related businesses are not allowed within a thousand feet of schools and are prohibited in all exclusively residential areas, is there more than that, that.
Parks as well.
No, actually, not included, that's only as a draw for you, in case that was one of the considerations that you wanted to see, so this one is just for the school buffers. And then this one is for the park, addition of parks, yeah, so you have those in front of you.
And nature, right?
No.
But nature and school are not included then.
Yeah, but they can be more.
Not the OHA.
Yeah, we're talking about the bare minimum of the OHA rules, and so the OHA rules would be the first one here, with school buffer. And so one of the things, um, to look at too, is just how much industrial land or commercial land, isn't it, so the pink is your commercial land, and the gray is industrial land. And typically, um, you know, for the manufacturing part of this, would be in the industrial area, if you were to do zoning, and for the clinical part.
And for the clinical part, would be in the commercial zone, the pink part. That would be the most light overlap for the zones.
Which is pretty limited if you're staying within the maps.
Yeah, and I think that Kayle brings up a, Councilor George brings up a good point, which is, is the, if you do go out for a ban and then having something to fall back on would be helpful, I imagine, to have like a backup plan. Especially if you're already in the throes of trying to understand it instead of going back to revisit. Um, it will be an election year coming up, and so, I mean, for council as well, so once again, you could have, um, different turnover.
So you're saying.
So I'm saying it could be a hybrid. There's either two options.
Okay, so we're saying we could, okay, so a yes vote means this and a no vote means this, that's what you've got, I mean, I, that sounds good. What do you think about that, other councilors?
I think we have to be careful how you word it.
Yes.
To make sure people understand what they're going, or they vote no, and they find, oh, we're welcome to not do anything. We gotta make it clear.
That's a problem sometimes, that language does get you, it's kinda.
That's what naturally think of your, most of, most, and actually if your phone could be, depending on how we word it.
No, no means yes.
Like, what if we put no will result in a ban anywhere in Sheridan, permanently? You know, that, that's simple, and yes will result with, uh, whatever, uh, like, the council sees. Like, did you wanna go with the OHA plan if the vote is yes, or did you wanna have some, did you wanna develop some rules and guidelines?
The only thing that would be referred to the voters is whether to implement the permanent ban or not.
You can't put anything else in it.
It's not a multiple choice.
I thought yes means this and no means that, but no, that doesn't work like that.
So you have to, you have to go with.
The voters would only be deciding on whether there is a permanent ban on PRPs in Sheridan. Completely independent of what, what time, place, manner, or restrictions we develop.
Okay.
Regardless of that, these, these, Kayle would have, these still would be in.
Yeah, yeah, we can't, can't change those two.
So that's a kind of misleading, even when I'm hearing me talk about it in the paper, that tells me that there's gonna be a ban, there won't be any. You're gonna have heard of people saying, it said no, and they're still in here, so that really needs to be explained.
No, if, if the voters pass, if we refer ballot measure that is banning soli-ven related businesses in Sheridan, and that passes, then a permanent ban on soli-ven related businesses exists for the city. There's no loophole.
Okay, and Heidi? Um, pages twenty and twenty-two show you the questions, so page twenty has the legal organ cities, um, model, the model soli-ven ordinance and ballot measure, and that's the one that was used, to my knowledge, pretty regularly throughout the coun- or throughout the state when cities and counties were using this. And so you can see the ballot title and the question on page twenty that is, uh, recommended, and so that gets to your question of like, you know, shall it prohibit soli-ven related businesses in the city? So that's pretty straight, and so the answer would be yes or no, right? And not one of those tricky double negatives. And then on page twenty-two is what the city po- uh, posed to the, um, voters back in, uh, November eighth, twenty twenty-two, and the question we had at that time was, shall the city of Sheridan prohibit soli-ven related businesses for two years? So a yes or a no, I think, it's pretty intuitive, okay, for that, go ahead, Kay.
So that are, now are taking, shall, shall the city should ban soli-ven related businesses forever?
Forever.
And, and so if they say yes, then that means it is, and if they say no, and if we do develop a plan, um, it would be, we, we wouldn't present that plan, I guess, as a statement, it would just be a plan we would have in case they do vote no. Uh, I guess we'd just be up to us if we do want to work on a plan in case, um, it's voted no. Not managed.
You know, I told Heidi, you're low.
If the people vote to allow soli-ven related businesses, do we have to default to OHA regulations or can we add our own?
So once it's gone on the ballot and they say they want it, can we then go for option one?
I'm saying two or three, you have to throw up our own, uh, restrictions, yes to vote.
Great, yeah. We can choose to not have time, place, manner restrictions, are we, or are we?
I mean, are we just go, what else, change, start with that?
The sound of commerce, right?
Okay. Alright, did we feel like, oh, go ahead.
Well, just to clarify, uh, Councilor Buckles, I think that that's what Councilor George is also saying, is with the ban, but then having a, a backup plan. And so he has proposed or is talking about doing option four, but then picking either option two or three. So that something is there for option one, I guess, option one, two, or three. But having, in case the voters would say, um, no, they don't want to ban it, right? And then immediately having an action plan in place.
Okay, thanks. Which, I, I think Tyler's saying we only have one question on the ballot about this, so it's, right? So we have to.
Please go for it.
Back on the plan.
Please don't go on the ballot. So ob- so he's saying, give them a, give them a, an, you know, an option, give them a vote.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Yes, but we're working behind the scenes on one of these other, one, two, or three, because there is a chance, I mean, there's a fifty, this is almost a fifty-fifty when you look at the results, right? And so I'll let Councilor George speak for himself, but.
Yeah, I was kind of, uh, it might be, uh, more costly since all the options cost money, but we would either do option two and three alongside option four, um, so that we would have a plan ready, um, unless we all want to, you know, let the guideline be, uh, what OHA has, um, but I think it would be nice if we had our own regulations.
Okay.
Ready in case the voters do want soli-ven here.
Okay, so I think where we're getting to is that first, first of all, uh, and I'll ask this question, you guys tell me whether this is what you want to do, that we will put it on the ballot and let the people decide on this issue. Okay. So to ban permanently, put it on the ballot, okay, can I just have a show of hands for who all will agree to doing that? Okay, and, and you're not sold on that, Rexy? Okay. Um, but, so that, and then, but it sounds like it looks like most of us, I mean, most everyone is, so then what we would do is have this backup plan and we would work on that to make sure that it's, you know, like from two or three or a combination thereof. But first, we'll just start with putting it on the ballot.
Yeah, and so it's thing is we be prepared unless we do decide that we just let OHA use their rules, but I, I feel like maybe we would just want to have our own rules.
We got Nathan's example, we could follow through with some of theirs as well, but, uh, I would like to put it differently versus a backup plan, to say, we put it on the ballot and the people say, yeah, okay, let's bring it in. We would have an ordinance ready to, uh, have it be implemented if the public decides they want soli-ven. I don't think that's really a backup plan, that's just getting ready.
Being prepared.
Yeah, being prepared.
No, you're right, okay.
Like Tyler said, it can't be multiple choice, we can only put the one on.
Right.
And then if it passes, it's banned.
Right.
And if it doesn't pass, then we have to go to the voters at a later date at another time with the ordinance. We don't have to go, I think we do, once it's banned, we can just pass the ordinance?
Okay, I think what, if the idea of being prepared with these other, um, you know, if it does pass, then we can pass an ordinance, I believe. Yes, Heidi?
Yes, so if the question at hand from, um, Councilor Acuff is, so let's just, right now where we are, is the ca- the voters did pass a two-year moratorium. So what that means is, what you can do, one of these four options, but essentially, if you did nothing, right? Then on January one, twenty twenty-five, the Oregon Health Authority rules would go into place. So, uh, so this, we, the city took the idea of taking the two-year moratorium to have this exact conversation.
Right.
So whether or not they wanted to design a time, place, or manner restrictions, adopt the Oregon Health Authority, or to go back out to the, uh, voters and say, are, you know, do you wanna prohibit?
So it sounds like the decision is option four, or we put it on the ballot. Okay. And then further, just further on that, it's, uh, you know, since we've kind of come to.
An ordinance is ready, so when it fails, uh, uh, prevent that. Soli-ven, we're gonna do this, aren't allowed to be banned, ordinance would be placed, ready to pass, that will control in a way we like to have it, or time, place, and manner restrictions. Line up and go.
Perfect, okay. Yes, Heidi?
So we will need a sample, whipper sample, sorry, we will need a motion to direct staff to prepare a ballot measure with the prohibition, um, to, um, direct staff to prepare an ordinance to refer to the, um, voters, a ballot measure for a ban on soli-ven related businesses.
Okay.
Kayla, would you like to make that motion since you came up with a good point?
Uh, I can, I can try, um, um, looking at, uh, uh, there's a sample.
Yeah, I was looking at that too.
You're okay with what I said, you can say so.
So.
Okay, at a second.
At a second.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Liz?
Um, this is just my feeling when I was reading through this stuff, this smacks too much of measure one-ten. You know, they're saying that people would have the option to go to a service center, what service center? Just like the rehab places, they don't exist. So it's, it's, it's frightening to me that this is even on a, a question people are putting forth to the voters, and I think we need to make it very clear that, yes, this is being offered to you, but the foundation isn't there, it's a pie in the sky, you know, idea that people can use this for depression and anxiety, but these places don't exist, just like rehab centers don't exist. With measure one-ten, Heidi, did you?
This is a little different than measure one-ten, we went to, uh, these facilities have to be put in place before this can ever happen, they have to be licensed. So I, I don't think that's apples to oranges, they're the measure one-ten.
You mean the manufacturing places have to be licensed?
The places that they do this, service has to be in place, they just can't go and buy it and sit out in their car and do it. They've, they've gotta be in a facility licensed to do this.
But they don't exist.
Pardon me?
They don't exist.
I know, so they can't do it until they do exist.
Yeah, that would be, they'd have to get the okay and then, and then they'd have to be in the right place and follow the rules.
They have to be licensed to buy the stuff from the grower. They have to have a facility to facilitate this treatment, so.
Okay, well, good work, Councilor Acuff, uh, gives us a place to start.
Proximately.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, actually, the way this laid out, if you did your homework and read this, you could see that it's nothing like measure one-ten at all. This has been very well done, I feel, and I think it will help a lot of people.
We need to vote.
We heard that first.
I don't even know, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
You did, and we were having a little further discussion. Okay, so now, all in favor?
Um, banning?
Of putting it on the ballot.
Putting it on the ballot, okay.
Okay, I already voted on it.
Alright, and I'll oppose, okay.
In the record, for the oral record, Councilor Acuff was opposed.
Okay, alright.
For the recording, we've been asked for people.
Oh, yes, that's right, okay. Okay, so the next, well, it's also another big discussion, and it's talking about the reveal of, uh, review of our goal-setting report, and that's on page thirty-seven, thirty-sixty-one. So I'm curious, um.
Sorry, I didn't interrupt you, um, Laura says that she may be able to join if we waited till about eight fifteen-ish? And so I don't know if you would entertain maybe taking another piece of this, if they had, and I'll, and I'll send her a text message.
That would be great, is that okay?
Okay.
Alright.
I had a hard time reading the letter from the mayor and council.
And the one from the city manager.
I did though, I was working on it, I showed it to Alicia Meyer, and she thought it was in Spanish, it was like, oh, it's.
Yeah, in fact, the letter from the city manager. It was Spanish or something like that. Okay. Okay, so let's go on to, for the task force, so. So, okay, so the, I guess you guys have kind of followed along that we, uh, we had Donna Garza, and then his contract expired, and then you had me, uh, at the task force, and at that meeting, um, the task force agreed that, um, Nick Genatino would take over as our facilitator, and that I would be his backup. Um, which is great, but our main goals for that last task force meeting was the point in time count. It got all wrapped up, this meeting actually, because of the weather and everything, it was postponed, so it was held like the night before the point in time count. And, uh, so I have results for that. So, uh, WACAP, you know, they say that, uh, they don't guarantee the accuracy of this, so, you know, you might say, oh, no, I know there's more than that or whatever. You, you're probably right, that this was what the count came out. So if anyone who doesn't know what the point in time count is, it's a one day of year where everyone in the country accounts, uh, their homeless population. So, in Sheridan, they determined that there are twelve individuals who identified during the January twenty-four, twenty twenty-four point in time count in the city of Sheridan. So that, you know, that is an answer that was really, really important to the council so that we know, you know, just, you know, what we need to do and, and how we need to handle that. So they broke it down and gave us some really great information, so of those twelve, five point four-two, so that was just really strange. So let's say six, um, people live in a car or a van. Uh, and then, let's see, and then there are those who are, they, they call eminently homeless, and there's three point two-five, so three. Um, and then there's an other unspecified.
What does that mean?
Um, I, I guess like they're, um, doubled up or they're likely to be evicted sometime soon. That would be eminently homeless, right on the edge there, so, and then, um, the, you know, the, uh, other category is one point eight, so I guess a couple people didn't know how to describe where they live. And transitional shelter, they have two point one-seven, I don't know if they have a transitional shelter, so I don't know how that could be, so, um, so that was anyway, basically what I think the council wanted to know is how many total people do we have with no roof over their head, and the answer is twelve, yes, Jim?
After, uh, you know, I was very much up for this point in time count, uh, after seeing how it was developed and how it was run, I have very little confidence in the point in time count. We asked these people to come into the American Legion and self-identify and answer a bunch of questions, and they were supposed to be groups going out to homeless camps to, to little headcount. If I understand correctly, they didn't find any, it was black magic, all the homeless people disappeared that day, and they couldn't find any to camp. They're out there. So, you know, what does that mean? Is our point in time count gonna work for us, or is it just a waste of time? And I know what I think, but, uh, and I don't think the count is, is extremely accurate. I might, I might complete that, I, I would love to, there's only twelve, we can't count that many people.
Yeah.
There's, there's a lot of others, there's no doubt.
Okay, so they asked further questions?
Five, five, I can't think of the names of.
Yeah.
And, and they have nothing.
Yeah.
They have a bicycle and a tent.
Okay, so based on that information, I'll tell you the rest of what they're telling us. So, the next thing that they're telling us is the length of current, uh, homeless, this homeless episode. So the majority of people, um, have been homeless for three years or more. So that's like four or five of our folks, so, uh, and less than three months, uh, two-point-one-seven. And four to six months, three-point-two-five. Um, two to three years, I'm kinda probably going at this funny, it's hard to read this thing. And one to two years is two-point-one-seven, so most of the people that were interviewed had been without, uh, a roof over their head for three years.
Or more, is there?
Or more, yes. Okay, and, um, it's fine, four to six months is, uh, more than, less than three months, so, okay, wait a minute. Alright, then, they asked them on how substance abuse disorder weighed into the situation, and, see this better, but the majority said they had no substance abuse issues. Two-point, well, say two people said yes, drug, uh, use is an issue for them, and two people said alcohol is an issue for them. And two people said both are an issue for them, both of them in alcohol, so. And then they wanted to know, um, about some other characteristics of chronic health conditions, eight out of twelve, mental health disorders, five out of twelve, physical disabilities, it's like about seven out of twelve, developmental disabilities, about three out of twelve, and those experiencing domestic violence, uh, looks to be about four out of the twelve. And then, they, they looked at the ages of the folks, uh, that, uh, allowed the interview, and the majority are age fifty-five to sixty-four. And the next biggest group is forty-five to fifty-four. And then, uh, followed by thirty-five to thirty-four, and then the smallest group looks to be, uh, eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds. So, it kinda looks like the older you get, the bigger the problem becomes. So, um, they also, uh, gave us information about the Sheridan School District data, and, I think they're telling us twenty-four students experiencing homelessness. Uh, most, twenty-two of the twenty-four, or ninety-two percent are doubled up. So I, you know, um, they're living in emergency shelters, places not meant for habitation, on the street, or they were on the street, but that's a point-in-time count. So doubled up accounts for almost half, and then, uh, the other, uh, almost, is almost half, is, uh, shelter, uh, you know, or living in a shelter more, more, excuse me, more, 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 I can't make a word work, come on. So that's kinda what we got from our point-in-time, um, report, so.
Can we have a copy of that?
I mean, it doesn't have to be denied, I, I Oh, yes, let me just forward the email to everybody, okay. Yes, Kim?
Uh, when was the last point-in-time count?
Last, right, this one, like, two years ago, we got a call that they, yeah.
Is that, do we have, like, data on the last few, like, our numbers coming up? Are they about the same?
That's a really good I wonder if they have that on their site, so, that, that'd be very interesting to know, if it's getting better or worse, or.
Although, although the data isn't very good. That, that would be interesting to look at.
And I think Amber said they didn't go up to camps the last time. There were just staff from WACAP that came out here, right? And they were at the food bank or wherever. Didn't she say that? I thought that's what she said, when she was talking about the last count.
Okay, and so with that accomplished, the next thing the task force was working on was, uh, the creation of a resource center. And, uh, in a, in a nutshell, the, the group thought that, uh, it makes more sense to put, uh, in with, uh, Grand Sherman and Community Services, the, the food bank. And so I thought, let me talk to Judy, see if she's, you know, she had talked about that before, and go ask her if she's still on board, and so I, I did that, and, um, so I met up with her, Julie Schuman, uh, there, and we walked through the building, and, um, Judy made good use of most of that building, so, you know, so, uh, lots of things going here and there and all that, but she said, this one would, this one space would work, and then there was another, um, kind of small office off to the side. And luckily, for these two spaces, they are located next to restrooms, so, and the one, it's kind of a long one, maybe six feet wide, I don't know, ten feet, ten, fifteen feet from the, a door that has access to the outside, all the way to the back where the restrooms are. So, it's kinda narrow and long, but it has a door directly outside. And then kinda beside that room going the other way, you know, I'm gonna guess that that room's about twelve by, I don't know, I'm gonna guess like sixteen and probably top, but it's just not that big of a room. But we determined that what we need at the resource center is just space for, um, a desk, and chairs, and chairs on each side of a desk. Um, I think we said, you know, why wouldn't it be nice if there was some privacy for conversation? Two desks, you know, and two, a desk in each room, so maybe two desks operating at the same time. And then, so, that's, you know, that's what we've done, we, um, the group decided that that would be the better location, and, you know, uh, told me, yep, go talk to Judy about this, did. But, uh, at that meeting, we also talked about different aspects of a resource center, and we talked about what our goals are, and so we decided that the goal of the project is to con- connect the community of Sheridan to quality resources and services for families and individuals experiencing hall, uh, houselessness and economic difficulties. The goal is to create a local facility to host a variety of service representatives from Yanville County organizations and nonprofits. So, uh, that's what we're trying to do, and there's a place that, that we could possibly set up to do it. So, we, it's going to, we read through, another thing we did, well, what do we already have? And so, we read through, uh, that, and some of the task force members added things they knew about, and we compiled a list of what Sheridan uh, already has to offer, and so that was one step, and then, all around this table are some great representatives who have a whole lot more to offer, and so, it's gonna be, um, what we need to know of those groups who offer all these, uh, different services for people, um, how many will have, uh, will be able to have representatives who come and, or like, even if it's just a couple hours a month, or whatever it turns out to be. So there's a lot of work to do that way, setting up who can come, uh, and pro, you know, provide time there on, on a schedule, and then set up a schedule, and set up what services will be, and then, there's a lot of things like that to include. Um, so it's partnering with Yanville County Service Providers, nonprofits, and other organizations to complete a plan to improve resource access for Sheridan residents through education about available services, assisting with paperwork, arranging appointments in McMenville, and advising of available transportation. So we do have, you know, the free bus service to get to some of these things, but some of these, uh, nonprofit groups also have some transportation that they can provide if needed. And then, so our steps are gonna include develop a plan and design for a one-stop resource center by renovating, uh, the, uh, the area of the food bank that, uh, we're, will be allowed to use, and, um, and work with the other, uh, service providers to implement a team approach to helping families and individuals, and then uh, possibly discuss, discussing funding and grant writing when the time comes for that, this process.
Um, so the food bank is going to allow us to use this as a resource center?
You know, here's, you know, I have to discuss this with the task force, but I, I'm thinking that those two buildings, uh, donated to Grand Sherman and Community Services from the stack, so they own those buildings. And then the people who are going to provide these services are, are either here and operating in Sheridan already, or their services that, that, you know, we help pay for and have access to in the county. So I am not sure, uh, how much involvement the city will actually need to have in that.
I'm not looking for city involvement, I'm want, I'm asking for, about, uh, the food bank. Well, I mean, Judy works her tail off, Judy does not have time to spend at a resource center.
No, we would not ask her to do that.
And I, I'm just worried that what if Judy needs that space for the food bank?
Yeah, and, and we have, we did talk through that.
Because we end up renovating and doing that sort of thing.
So, you know, uh, I'm just, tonight, I'm just trying to give you the, what the task force agreed to do, and those are the main things, is to look at this, investigate it, try to organize it, and figure out what a plan is. But I hear what you're saying, and I, I wouldn't want Judy to take on any more than she already does.
She's been sick too.
I know.
And, um, it's, it's hard, so I got to hurt someone.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't, and, I don't, that, that would not be our plan, I, I just know that it would not, so.
Is the task force looking at, at, getting some help for Judy? I mean, not, not the resource people to come in, I, I'm assuming they're just gonna come in, do their job, um, make their connections, um, and then, but I'm, I'm just worried about the building itself, and what.
Well, I know some people have been concerned, you know, among the wild rumors, that, uh, it's gonna be a hangout, or it's gonna be an overnight shelter, and it isn't gonna be anything like that at all. It's gonna be two offices that are available to people who represent services to meet with people here, so that those people are not trying to get all the appointments, you know, in McMenville and like that. So, um, so this would not be more work for Judy, that would not be part of the plan, Liz?
So, will someone coordinate, um, getting those people here and then setting up appointments for people? Because I, um, recently interviewed Julie Schuman with, with Churches United, and she indicated that this would be for everybody, including homeless.
Yes.
And so, if someone needed services, they could come, which is good.
Absolutely.
Because that means there's more people that will utilize those cert, these services, but someone needs to coordinate
That's what we're working
The appointments and bringing, so at first, the scheduling of who's there when, and then coordinate the appointments for all of them.
You know, it's, there's so many facets to organizing this, that yes, you're absolutely right, you know? And yes, this would be like a place like, um, uh, for whatever reason, you might be hitting a tough spot, like I can't pay my light bill, or I, you know, I'm having trouble coming up with a rent. You would go to this place and be able to be connected with somebody who can help you with a lot of different issues, you know, or, um, whatever, I need diapers for my child, or I don't, can't afford them. This would be a place where people from this area could, uh, find a representative from these service organizations, uh, to help them out. So you're right, but the, right now, um, we're not there yet, we, we're, we're still figuring out what services will be offered, the schedule for them, uh, what can we, what can we offer? Who can provide, you know, who can circulate through, um, so it's still pretty preliminary, so. Margaret, did you wanna say? Oh, okay, I thought I said your name, and she's on the task force, and that's Laura, isn't that what they asked? In case I was saying something wrong, and, okay. So, yeah, we, we also have a list of questions that we've prepared, uh, before, uh, that we need to know the answers to before developing a resource center, Kayla?
Um, yeah, I was just gonna, um, ask, I think Liz, kind of, like, say, if somebody needs to apply for a job,
Yes.
Very familiar with computers and internet, or if they just need help, maybe, maybe to see help where to go. It's not necessarily just people who are homeless, it can be anybody.
Absolutely. Um, and, and
Anyone.
Yeah, telling people where to go, like, if they, if they do want to get treatment for, um, addiction.
Yeah.
We're not gonna, cities aren't gonna
No.
Provide that, we're gonna tell them
We're gonna hook it
Where you can go.
We can help them make appointments, we can help fill out the paperwork, we can show them how, you know, to get the bus service drive to where they need to go to get that. Tell them, and all of that, just to where, you know. Yes, okay, um, yes.
Um, is the task force still working on a monthly schedule after?
It is, and that was an issue we ran into, and I, again, need to apologize to Ivan, because, you know, it's one hour, once a month, and, uh, you know, out of sight, out of mind, I guess is what happened, but we went far too long, and I apologize about that, and, and Ivan, and I think that, uh, we need to change the time on us, uh, maybe make it earlier or something, because it's really hard. With such a short amount of time to get this much done. And you know, like, what you were asking, Kayla, like, I, I've been thinking about that too, like, with the employment service, they do offer classes there, like, on resume writing, interview skills. They have all that going on, so if we knew, uh, when those classes are offered, and we could just make people aware of it, um, you know, I think that could be a very helpful step up, so.
Resource director.
Yeah, yeah, and I was thinking, it's there, if it's there by the food bank too, and, you know, Judy said she had like a hundred and fifty people, families, cars, come through the line this last week. Well, they're all going by those big windows, so maybe that would be a way to see what kind of, you know, and then, a way to contact the resource center. But we do have a lot of work to do, so we have a lot of organizing, and, uh, yes, Kayla?
Liz, be.
Well, I was just wondering why we weren't considering the little house across the street? Because I've talked to Judy in the past, and she just said that she was really overwhelmed, and that's prior to anything currently going on. And she said, if, you know, she got her perfect dream of a new food, you know, shelter, she'd have plenty of room for a resource center that, she was very attached, like you were saying, Ron San. And, you know, a lot of the folks that came in here were wondering why we weren't using, facilitating that little house across the street, which you could really have lived and modify it to do resumes. I mean, I've been in that house, and it's pretty ghastly, but I can see past that stuff. And I've even talked to a contractor about, you know, what it would take to conform, because they're doing it for free, it's not costing anybody any money, and, um, for the resources to be able to, I, I'm just trying to picture two little desks in the back of her, you know, she's getting a new walk-in cooler, she's trying to facilitate what she has, she has got a mother lode over there already, and this little house can be supervised by the police, and can be
Did you say somebody volunteered to do that work?
Get bids for free, which is free.
A lot of people We had one that was like almost forty thousand dollars.
Well, you know, if you look down what that house looks like, and I don't know how many of you guys have been in that house, I've been in it, and part of it is due to the fact that it was never cleaned out after it was vacant. So now you got, you know, you got a, a roaming problem in there, and you gotta take all those things into consideration, but if you think about per square foot, what it costs to, you know, build a new house versus what it would be worth if you were selling it, you come out way ahead, just investing the money and improving the house.
Well, you know, I did throw that out there, you know, uh, and we did talk about it at this task force, and we weighed the pros and cons, and I, and people, you know, it's, I wanna say it was almost unanimous, that they preferred to have it over here because it is near the food bank, because it's like near the Legion who's doing those lunches and all that, so, and that we could go, or a lot less money, but, we did talk about that, and we thought, well, you know, and the amount of work, and so that's what they said.
Well, I, I don't know, I thought, too, the, that the count, they bring things to the council, but the council makes the decisions.
Right, that's true.
And so, it's really based on what we decide.
Right.
You know, it's kinda like the planning commission brings in ideas, and then we can or cannot, and I thought this task force worked under the same, I wouldn't expect them to know what we might know.
Right.
And, but they're doing the best they can with what they know.
Right.
So there's all those sensitive things to take into consideration, but I think as a council, we should at least look into that for options that you'd have, and if you want me to bring you back some numbers, real estate-wise, I can do that, to show the pros and cons of fixing something versus building something versus renting something is just the worst, and on an already overtaxed building, that at least when I was with her, she, she just, she thought it was, you know, just before she got sick, um, it was just very bulging down there. I mean, it's good for them, but it, I don't, I don't feel like, you know, that's a burden on, I don't feel like wanting to put a burden on her from us.
Okay, and then?
There's, it's not gonna be connected to the food bank. There's a separate door to go into these two offices, and to the bathroom. The food bank still has a big portion of that second building. Judy won't have any task to do with that office at all. The volunteers will take care of that, and not, not Judy, she just does what Judy does, runs the food bank.
But she has a lot of storage for items that she doesn't have enough room now to store, and she uses those extra spaces to store stuff. And and she's getting a new walk-in cooler, which is kind of a cool thing, so like, okay, where's that gonna go?
If that's very, part of.
Yes.
Okay, so that's just kind of an update from the, oh, oh, Kayla?
Um, so, uh, I have two things, uh, first, real quick, so is uh, this building, does it currently have any storage for the food bank, or is it just living empty right now?
Now, there's food storage, oh, this section?
Yeah.
There's nothing in those two rooms that Judy thought would be our best options if we go there. There's nothing in there, the the room between this long room over here, she puts bottles and cans, and they're all neatly stirred up on these shelves. But it's, so there's extra storage there, uh, because we would need that room, and then she's got storage all the way down the the back.
Um, and then my other question, so as far as these organizations coming in, would we be paying for these organizations to come in, there would be no money involved at all? They wouldn't be giving us any money, we would give them any money, it would just be basically them volunteering to come in?
If they have staff that, you know, because again, most of them are um Yan Hill County organizations, or they're like in Compass Yan Hill Valley, or things like, you know, some of the others. So they're either nonprofits, or or already paying, because they do this work in Yan Hill County, and work already in Yan Hill County, so.
The, the, the county organization, not, not organization or, I got you, yeah.
I think that's the way we're hoping it goes.
Like YCAP or one of those.
But they're understaffed, but, so I'm gonna piggyback on that.
Okay.
So YCAP is clearly understaffed, and everyone knows that. When they're, when you're in these meetings, are they saying, yes, we can provide someone for a couple hours on a certain day? I mean, is that, is that really viable? Because that's what goes nonprofits are for, because like every other nonprofit.
So what, what we did to begin with was we had everyone at the table who represented one of uh an organization, like to write down what services they could offer. Provoking help was amazing, you know, it had a few major things that it wanted to op, that that group wanted to offer, but YCAP did too, and and so did um Health and Human Services are there, and and so they all were kind of, they all filled out of um what they could bring to the table, and and it was pretty amazing, so.
That's good.
But whether or not, you know, I I see your point, and that it is expensive, it does require staff. But you know, because there are.
Travel time.
Yeah, but we are thinking of, uh, like I say, this is still preliminary organization, but like if they could only offer us a couple hours a month, that's better than what we have now. And so there, how that would work, and how they would rotate, and who, who can uh bring people, and who can offer literature, and who can, you know, that's, that's still on the plans, so, I, and uh.
But they're willing to extend out here to the west valley.
Sounds like they are, because they, that's what they said they could do on 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 there, so we'll, we'll, we'll check on that, so, okay.
So I have another, whatever happened with the portable showers that were gonna be given to us?
You know what, everybody is kind of aware of that, but first, we were, we were working our way through things, and the first was the point in time count, we got that down. The next is trying to organize this resource center, we're still in the middle of that one, but everybody is aware of those, and then there's, but there's maybe been a little bit of discussion, but nothing that even gives me a feeling for what they will decide and what to do. I saw, I don't, I have to say, I don't know the answer to that one. Anybody else from the line?
Just wait, excuse me, what, I don't understand what you just said, I thought YCAP gave us those shop that mobile unit.
Remember, we all went and looked at them and everything, and I guess that was a possibility. So then, um, I might need some Heidi help on this one, I think Compass has the Measure One Ten, because we'd have to put it somewhere, and we'd have to have it operated. And did you say they have Measure One Ten funds that they could operate those if we go that way?
I'm sorry, what was the first part?
About those shower trailers, and.
Um, I think you, I, um, we need to circle back and talk about that there.
Okay, we're not there yet on the task force, so, and so I just didn't know if you might have kind of a, yeah, that's what they said, or, okay. So, yeah, it's, it's like we actually probably need to meet more frequently than we do to get this all right, so.
That's, that's what I was thinking, an hour or months?
Yeah, I gotta do it, but you know, we actually have covered considerable ground, you know.
Oh, I, I agree, but there's always, you know, like you said, you ran along with it.
Yeah.
I'm sure you did, because there was so much.
Yeah, there were some really great people there, so.
How do you?
I was just curious, when is your next task force meeting, is it on Valentine's Day?
It's February twenty first, I believe.
The twenty first, okay, wait, no, um, I'm gonna check here, I'm gonna. Just wanna make sure we get the agenda up.
Oh, yeah, that would be the third one, I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, because of. So it's Friday first?
Because I, yeah, that's what I remember.
And what time are you doing them for, now?
Well, we had to change the time, because we didn't realize it until after the meeting, so uh as far as if they wanna go longer, then we probably need to come in earlier, or meet somewhere else or something, because I thought we were gonna have evening months along that night, so. Yes, Kayla?
We go, what time?
Uh, the, um.
It's like four, still at four o'clock.
Um, will, will there be meetings after the legislative uh short session coming up, um, because I know there's I don't know if there'll be any bills that'll directly affect the homelessness, I know I can figure, we talked about one ten. Actually, I did hear we're gonna talk about homelessness, some of the bills are gonna be addressed on that. Um, there's a lot of what the task force is like, doing like change after those, some of these bills have been passed. I was just wondering if there's gonna be any meetings after this.
So this will be our third meeting, the original plan was six, but I don't think we can get, uh, you know, it doesn't seem to me that we're gonna get all of these different groups organized, and just, so this will be our third meeting in the next two or three meetings, you know, so we should keep an eye on that, see how that could help.
Yeah, because after that, some things like change, or there might be more restrictions, or measure one ten, like, the, uh, not, not, yeah, modify, modify.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so then.
A board is on my, uh.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go back to review of goal setting, report.
Just really quickly, Laura, um, I told her just a couple minutes, and then this conversation went a little longer, which is fine. But um she was at a, um, up the canyon, which, like, middle city area, I don't know. Anyways, for a meeting up there, and so she is on her way down, she has a driver, but she may or may not use cell phone during this time. And so I told her she could, she was waiting for us in a parking lot, and so I told her just to go ahead and start home, because it's a long trip.
Okay.
Yes, and so she is uh there, and she's going to listen and answer questions as long as she has reception.
All right, thank you, Laura. All right, so we've all turned to the strategic plan. And I guess we're gonna have to read the letter from the council, I'm kidding. All right, so I think we need to go over and just start on page fifty, fifty-two, three, the goal number one. Okay, so, goal number one, revitalize and recruit downtown businesses. And so recruiting new businesses, the metric craft and implement business recruitment strategy, and consultation with SED Core, Chamber, Downtown Revitalization Group, and Downtown Property Owners. Review and consider city staff research and recommendation for code and zoning changes to support new businesses. Consider rezoning and amend ordinances to accommodate new businesses, including our rezoning. Okay, what do you guys wanna say about that, is that what you wanted?
There's a lot of stuff we want.
But do you think that summarizes what we said at the goal?
I believe at that time, we did, I'm speaking purely for myself. Uh, because I was looking through here, because as we know, code enforcement was in a, a very hot button discussion, we've kind of beat to death, and then uh Deja was uh setting things up, moving things along, we thought we got that under control. And now with uh Deja gone, we're back to, sorry, from square one, is that a fair statement?
Not necessarily, I mean, we have a program in place now.
But uh, I think that would be near the number one goal, um, we have to get the uh city looking nice, if we're gonna try and revitalize and recruit downtown businesses, which right now you come in and uh I'm a business owner, I'm thinking, ah, go somewhere else.
I agree with you, so then?
Well, that's the reason I wanted to get on the city council, was because of code enforcement. Well, this is before Ivy was here, that we had a building fall down, and other things put around it, and and abandoned cars and all that, so I was a real advocate of getting code enforcement going. And so, two years has gone by, and and when we interviewed Ivy, we told her that. Two years have gone by, and I thought we were there, I thought we were heading down the road, and then we lose Deja. And, you know, all the work she did is all on hold now, if it even exists, and it were all these going back and writing citations for their third violation, their third time around. So, it might have been, we lost ground, we're gonna start all over again, and things are bad, rosy out there, some places that got partially cleaned up, that's what they got, partially cleaned up. So, I just have a big concern that, you know, if we don't get things cleaned up, nobody's gonna wanna come here. That's just where I'm at.
Okay, Liz?
Is it possible to add code enforcement to goal two, ensure a safe and durable community? Because it is ensuring a safe community by code enforcing.
Well, yeah, it seems like it could go on, revitalize too, um, and recruit in goal number one, but you're right, it could also fit into the other two. Or yeah, increase community livability. And, yeah?
Uh, I I, I do think though, that, I guess that with, with code enforcement, I think it's, it's, just because it's not in the plan, we're not gonna focus on it, I mean, we're gonna have a new code enforcement person. And that maybe let them do code enforcement, and we can try to make sure they're doing what we want them to do, whereas this is more like something that takes, well, twenty twenty-five, a year, it takes longer. Um, I know code enforcement does take a long time, and, but, there's gonna be a person doing code enforcement, there's not gonna this, this type of work is, is like, takes everybody.
I wanted to share something that I learned, so, you know, I go to court just to listen in there, and we have this amazing judge, I don't know if you guys have met her, she's wonderful, and I, I've watched her, uh, the way that she does this thing, and first, um you know, she'll ask you, you know, yeah, so this is a problem, and, and what have you done to correct this, and whatever. And she listens to what they have to say, and then she kind of works things out with them, like, well, I will send you for March seventh, but when I see you there, then you're going to have this, um, you'll have your, those days are driving things, you'll have your insurance, and you'll you'll have your license and stuff like that, and you'll come and you'll show this to me, then, uh, we'll we can work this down, and the fine would be reduced, and if you take your classes, and it won't be put on your permanent record. Anyway, she goes a long way to offer people a way to become compliant, and uh, you know, it's doable. And she's a very positive person, you know, when they do come in, and, and they have done it, you know, well, good for you, thank you for doing that. We're so happy you have insurance, because that makes the world safer for us and for you, and you know, things like this. So anyway, with code, I, I asked her a little bit about uh code enforcement, and she is, she is over just ten courts. And so in ten different places, and she sees how they do things differently in different towns, and she sees what works better than some other things, and you know, she's willing to help us with that. So, I think what we had going with code enforcement was, you know, you would go there, and the coder enforcer would see the infraction, and they would point that out to the property, the person who lived there, the property owner, whichever it might be. And says, you know, this is, you know, say, this is a violation of Sharon's code enforcement laws, and and uh, and give them some time to say, so here's what I need you to do, I need you to get this off of this property. And uh, I will be back next week, you know, so this is just my idea now, uh, I'll be back next week, and if it's gone, great. And if you need to work on something else on this property, you could, or you could just say, thank you so much, people sure appreciate it, and you're done. But if they don't do it, you know, you let them know that if it's not there, then I'm going to issue this citation. And uh, you will tell whatever excuses you have, or why this isn't then, to this judge. And she does that other part, because I guess she's very friendly, and she does offer positive ways to take care of business, and, you know, so, and, but she also, um, you know, said, well, why didn't you do it, you know, and, or, what would it take to get this done? And you know, there's a lot of reasons why people don't do stuff, but she listens to that, and then she tries to find ways to do it. So rather than putting that part of the job on code enforcers, I think that it, it could be more, um here's the infraction, I'm, you know, here's a week to take care of that, and if they do, great, and if they don't, uh, then they, they explain why they don't, uh, to this really nice judge who will work with them, and she'll work out a plan with them, and and bring them back into court, she's out here, you know, monthly, until you get through it. And so, I thought that that would take a lot of those check back, check back, check back, uh, on the code enforcer, so that they can move on, and it's being addressed. And also the judge says she is almost complete compliance, so. Yes, Heidi?
Um, two things, one is, in an ideal world, it could work like that, but it is a very tedious process. And what I have found is that when people, um, you cite them into court, they start to grow frustrated with the process. And so if people are making positive improvements, then we continue to keep that in our league, because we don't wanna cite anybody that is making positive improvements. And so, that part is the tricky, and it does take a lot of time. We are in the last um interview phase with, we whittled it down to two candidates, and so um, hopefully by the end of, well, maybe by this week from today, we'll be able to offer a position to somebody. And so we had really, really excellent candidates, and all of our top candidates actually reside in Sheridan. And so they're deeply familiar with um the issues at hand, so I'm very, very excited to see what they bring, or what the final candidate does. Um, I've had, uh, Laura is there online, and she wants to.
She has her hand up.
Oh, she's ready to chime in.
I think we wanna add code enforcement, or.
Well, good evening, am I, am I okay to talk there, or?
Sure.
Okay, um, so, uh, 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 first of all, just good evening, and thanks for putting up with me, reaching you as I come down from the canyon. Um, I think this is a really, really good conversation about code enforcement, because it just tells me that, you know, of course, you really care about your city. Um, when you're setting goals, um, what I would invite you to think about is, rather than say code enforcement is a, is a goal or a priority, tell me what code enforcement is going to get you as a city. Um, for example, let me just give you an example that you already have. You have said, we're going to invest in Sheridan Road. You didn't say, um, we're going to make, uh, to make sure that our public works or director or our water director, um, make sure that Sheridan Road happens, so do you see the shift? It's, um, it isn't so much, we're going to improve, uh, we're going to do code enforcement, but what is code enforcement going to get you? Um, give that to me as a goal, uh, and that, that's where I can help you, um, see if you've already captured it in your plan. Um, because I think, I think it was Kayla who said, uh, we're going to fill uh this position, and it's going to, and we're gonna make sure that that happens. So tell me, um, or think about it, when you're thinking about goals, think about what's code enforcement gonna get you, and then look in your goals and see if it's there already.
Okay. So I think the idea is just what we want to happen is to clean up our town, and make it more livable for, you know, families, and more inviting to the businesses, and I think that's why we could fit it in just about all the different sections, too, so.
Sure, just like you could say sewer, just like water, just like, you know, some of these are like basics, right? That you have as your basic level of your city, and those are your minimums, and then now these are a little block too, these are, these are goals, right? Because otherwise, you're gonna start by to get, uh, sheriff's deputies, and city electric, and, you know, planner, things like that. So try to lift up just a little bit from that very rule specific, that will help you accomplish the goal that you want.
Okay, go ahead.
I think it would fit well into, uh, goal three in that if you live next to somebody that's got two dead cars in their lawn and their lawn is throwing about a foot high, having code enforcement work with that is gonna allow you to have a better feeling about the community and have, uh, community livability be improved for you by using code enforcement. Is that, did I, did I lead the right way on that part?
Good, um, and so what, what would your metric be? Because you know you have a code enforcement officer, you know, you're, you've already got the budget for that, you're resourcing it. And so, um, that would be a good place to put it as, um, if you, if you feel you need it. And, but you have to tell me how you're gonna measure it. Like you, you, you say, we're gonna have code enforcement, okay. Well, how you, however you're gonna measure that, like, what's your success measurement? It doesn't, it probably isn't a hundred citations, right? That's not, it's not really what you want. What you want is, you want the effect of those hundred citations, right? So that's where I'm kind of pushing you just a little bit. Tell me, tell me what you want the outcome to be. That's the language you're looking for.
I think it's hard to, hard to quantify, um, you know, if you say, uh, if we say this, you know, our goal is to, uh, increase the livability by twenty percent. We've got no dynamic to measure that against, so we can't really put it that way. Uh, on the side basis, you're right, it's not gonna, it's not what we're looking for and it's not gonna help. That isn't a good metric to use to measure. I think it's a little intangible when you say we'd like a code enforcement to, you know, improve, increase community livability. But the metric, I don't, I can't put my finger on it.
Are you talking like more come out with like, the end result is we want, uh, no cars or garbage in the yards on the streets or something? Is that a thing?
Yeah, that's a great one. You could say reduce, um, the number of cars, um, by twenty five percent. Uh, and you're gonna have to help me a little bit with the cars, right? Like is this, I mean, I don't know what that is, like, so is that? Yeah, that's, that's what I'm getting at. That's great area. Yes, that's the type of thing that we wanna work on.
I, okay, okay, and, um, Cam?
Uh, we could also maybe phrase it as, um, reduce the number of code violations in the city? Is that, is that right? I mean, cause that's not, not just saying it just cars, but it's like sizable, sizable offenses. They're just worded as less things in town that could be cited. I don't know.
I, I probably understand what you're saying.
Goal would be more compliance with city ordinances. Is that a goal?
And Rossy, and Rossy haven't had that here. Go ahead.
So many of these things are hard to measure.
Yeah.
I think, um, I, I'm starting with Denny. I think what we need to do is be specific about certain buildings in town. Have set a date to which they are either abated, cleaned up, finished, whatever needs to be done. Be specific and have a goal in mind and a metric to get there. I think having, uh, I think having a code enforcement officer full time with the job, give them a chance to get reestablished.
Right.
They, that's what their job is gonna be. And I think they will work hard, we will try to help them make that happen also without having to add a specific goal of.
Code enforcement.
This and specific numbers are hard to keep track of. Um, I think we can be specific and get something done.
Oh, I see, okay. All right, I hear you.
So just a quick note, sorry to correct you, Council, we do not have a full-time code enforcement.
I didn't say a full-time, but we had someone working at that specific job in that position because they're also doing emergency management.
Yes, okay, good, just wanna be sure. Uh, we do get complaints that come in both online and paper complaints. So maybe that's something that you could try to use for your measurement, like less of those in the year. However, I do have a feeling, because we get, you know, we get them three a week. So we can try to use that as a measurement. But I have a feeling that once you also grow effective in something, you do get more of them for a while because people start to see that process working.
We're actually getting some success with this.
Yeah, and so people have more faith in the system. And so you may have a peak of those that goes up. And so, um, I think that another goal of code enforcement that we have is doing education around it. So having so many articles, you know, in the bulletin about code enforcement is something that I could offer as an idea. Um, we also could put together a community survey just about how people feel about, um, and what they think that the code enforcement, um, should tackle first, whether it's cars and lots or basketball hoops that are stranded on the sidewalks, right? So we could put together, um, surveilize that and it could really help direct me through the operating.
In an effort to get cars taken care of that were sitting there in the city offered, uh, I guess, to take care of it. There's even a fifty dollar reward. Is that still available?
Yep, it's still available for people. It's offered when people go to people's home, when the code enforcement goes to the home and they have that. Um, and people just don't take care of that. And it's one of the eat or do that, it's just one of the easiest things to, so.
You don't have to judge that, now that she says, and, and I don't know how you, she goes, you know, she goes, I'm gonna fix that or that was my dad's. And they have become emotionally attached to this, you know, one who has looks like a family garden. And that has sentimental value. And she kind of smiled at that because she's obviously heard that, but I, I also believe she has a plan, so. Yeah, okay. All right, so code enforcement would probably be very important to all three of these goals. Is that what everybody thinks that as a part of accomplishing these goals? Okay. Yes, Liz?
I'm jumping ahead, but I like, um, Heidi's note about adding parks and rec. And I was thinking, when I was reading through this, on, um, goal two and three, we suggest, uh, the charter and both goals, maybe combine the charter to goal two and add parks and rec to livability goal three. Because parks, I mean, anyone knows that if you have nice parks in the town, it increases the quality of life in your town and the livability. So, um, I don't know if it's possible, and I wanted to ask you, Laura, why, uh, why are there two separate charter issues, um, columns? Why goal two and goal one, goal three? What, is it possible to combine that or are they just?
Yeah, I'm good. Sorry, I'll let you finish your question.
No, that was the question.
Um, you absolutely can combine them. They were in both goal two and three because that was important to this group. Um, and we met in, um, a couple months ago. Um, so I kept them, um, because that's where this group, this group wanted them in both lists. But you absolutely could, uh, have that in one place only and add the parks to goal three. I think that's a, something we could do with, uh, if we get, if I get five degrees.
Okay, anybody wanna comment on that?
And.
Go ahead.
Were you gonna say something?
Okay, um. Okay, so. All right, so we went through the reporting in goal one.
Okay.
And then, uh, the second part was incentivizing new business, support downtown revitalization group with applications for Oregon Main Street System Grants. Okay, so that's another thing, uh, it looks, how long does the higher meaning Michael Coleman have to use that grant? Is there any ending date on that?
That came up at revitalization very much.
I know, they, they read that off, but I saw something even more current than that and I printed it off and I left it at my office. But it was an email from, I didn't get it from him.
You gotta get it from Heidi about what he said he's gonna do.
Yeah.
I mean, window problems and.
Well, anyway, by this summer, he's supposed to have the downstairs fixed was my summary of that. And then he's having a problem with smothering windows or something. But it was a really nice email. I'm sorry, I was hoping to do to get her tonight, but I didn't stop at my office. It was an email, but maybe I got it from, um, the revitalization, she sent it out to everybody later. But he hopefully is, hopefully within the next, by March, he's something.
Hopefully.
Uh, I have, I have any? Uh, TK says he has until May twenty twenty five.
May twenty twenty five, a little over a year. But that's with the money that they've got, that they were giving to that immigrant.
Well, have it done hopefully by later in the summer twenty twenty four. But why, what does that?
Well, because I thought that it's been a number of years that that's been like that, you know, that that always been like that. And we go to him and, uh, he'll give us some updates, but, um, then there's always reasons why it's not happening. But I mean, you could get that for a while, but after several years, you.
So TK, TK says that he doesn't think he needs an extension on the grant. You can get extensions next year, but he doesn't think he'll need it. Um, but I don't, but so the, the, what is the, which one are we on? Why is the?
They're incentivizing new businesses and, you know, just at that.
We're back on goal one.
Goal one, yeah.
She says, per Oregon Main Street, the delays are not unusual.
Okay. Yes.
I will say there is, I mean, it's low, but there is some progress.
Yeah.
I mean, he's got, it sounds like it's more seismic than secure, which is, this is.
That's, you know, it is a good thing.
I know, I know, he's got the studs up, he's got the paper up and not sure what is.
I think his, his goal is to get the downstairs done first and the framing of the offices, hopefully we'll start to see that. I, I look at it all the time because I'm right next door to him. But I also drive down the alley all the time to see where all the debris is off the property. And the debris is really like eighty percent of it's missing out of the back. That he stuffs back in there, so, you know, you gotta get rid of that junk afraid you can bring in this stuff in. So I do a little observation almost every day. I make it.
So you're seeing progress?
I see progress happening, I do. All right, because, you know, I feel like, uh, I don't know who said it earlier, but that if we can't get our downtown thing done, and that is the main part of our downtown, then, you know, our chances for economic development are. Yeah, so thank you. Okay, all right, so our target for twenty twenty five on that is to open at least one new business, publish a list of incentives, repair grants given, oh, repair grants given, is that what that is? Like we're gonna, so you can get a repair grant? And then code amendments made, so, okay. Sorry.
Where are you at?
I'm on the goal number one.
Oh, goal one.
I don't clear it down. Incentives in twenty twenty five, twenty eight, and the, uh, second to the last in that category says, I read it, repair grants given. I was like, no, it's repaired grants given.
So, I'm sorry, um, yeah, I don't really understand about the repaired grants given. Actually, you don't. I, I don't know, do you remember what that was?
Laura?
Laura, we don't have any money for giving repair grants. Or do we need to repair the grants?
Repair grants.
Or does it relate to?
So, um, so I can get to the metric, you had said apply for grants. And some of the grants that, um, my memory of the discussion was going to help, uh, downtown business make repairs to let their work runs.
Okay.
And so we were hoping to, uh, given a repair grant, um, or acquired and help someone to acquire. Uh, because I believe a lot of this work was going to be led by your downtown revitalization committee. So I believe the conversation was that the city might be able to help that downtown committee, um, apply for grants. And then the result would be, um, one repair grant was given. Um, if you think that's gonna mechanically work a little bit differently, let's talk about it.
Does that mean Main Street grants, there's actually a different thing?
It probably would be whatever grant we could find that would apply to this situation.
Yeah.
The question I have is, do you mean you, council, mean that the city is going to help assist with like the grant writing? Like TK said, I did before? Or do you mean, like, we're gonna pay for a professional grant writer? Like what, what exactly are we looking for? Cause support downtown revitalization group with applications? Or are we just gonna like have a council letter and then you sign it? You know what I mean? Like what level of support, just since I need to make sure I'm doing this work, I need to know what that looks like.
And I see what you're saying. I would think, I would think there's all different kinds of people out there. Some are very incentive driven, some are not. And I have had experiences a little bit of all of that. And if somebody needed some help and they were to come to the city or the city planner, I don't know why I pick them, pick them on more, but she's there. And, um, and maybe find out where there might be help in getting grants, that would be phase one. Like here's a list of places that might be able to help you. Then let's pretend they don't know how, have a clue how to do it because I'm pretty sure depending on how much time they have, they could maybe get it done themselves or they might need a little bit of assistance. You might wanna be able to, if you had somebody that might be able to assist them in grant writing. I don't like to overtax, um, Marilyn Bride Levy, that she got that museum to work at today because of all of her grant writing. And it pretty much blew all the wind out of her, she doesn't talk. Even, I even approached her, wouldn't have to pay her to anybody get a grant if that would encourage her. And she still was, you know, so, you know, some of these people work very, very hard and they're very, very tired. So, but maybe you being, you know, the new blood, might be able to know somebody who might be able to do it, give direction, do it possibly with the income to them, so that would be a little bit of income for somebody who writes grants. And, you know, just some kind of alternatives to help these people. Because I can tell you that Sheridan has a lot of stifling stuff going on in Sheridan when it comes to building in, in a floodplain. And I think that's something, as I get more information, we need to work on as a city because that was stifles bigger and better probably than anything else that you could come up with on this list. Okay, so let's go on with investing in roads or drinking water and broadband.
Did you get your question answered?
No.
Oh, but I gave you some ideas. Okay.
I have an idea for creating a centralized grant list for business owners.
Okay.
For, um, people who are interested in setting up a business that can be good. And then we should put together a brochure or an information campaign on how to build in a flood zone and what it takes so that when people call here, we know that, but no, I don't know, am I supposed to help?
Well, I can't see you writing, writing grants for private businesses, I can't see that. But I, I, you know, I do got the list, so they'll know where to go for helping.
But I mean, as far as the downtown revitalization, like I have no problem working with the Sheridan Revitalization and helping, you know, to encourage that, facilitate and come up with some grant, you know, making sure that applications are getting churned out or doing some editing, I work very well with their, um, chair. However, I don't want to be giving that, there's only so much time in the day. And so I don't wanna overstep what you have the expectation and you find out that I've been spending hours of the day doing this and then you're like, whoa, we need you to be doing something else, so.
Right, that. Yes, exactly. Okay, all right, so this, um, so in the investment roads, suburbs, drinking water, broadband, allocate funds to complete and update economic opportunity analysis, buildable land inventory, transportation system plan, housing capacity analysis and broadband plan. And apply for grants to complete and update plans. So are we good with all that?
I think I missed what you wanted from me. You did want me to like partner with them hardcore to do grant writing or you do not?
No, I, I said I liked your idea where you have the list that you can give them so that like, who can help?
We don't have time to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to do that, I wasn't sure.
Oh, sorry, I, I apologize, I just, we can help that, hook them up with somebody that could do that.
Okay, and then maybe widely editing or just being there to, for the Sheridan revitalization.
But don't, don't, don't have them expecting you to do it.
Okay, okay.
Help, but I don't think we need.
Okay, so what is goal number two?
Yes.
No.
No. All right, what did I do?
Under, uh, two, twenty twenty five target, we've got Sheridan Road completed. Don't see a whole lot of metrics in getting there.
No.
Well.
Yeah, partially.
Although apply for grants.
Starting.
Based on what civil questions, the utility.
Yeah.
We have to wait for engineering before we do much more at this point.
Yeah, well, we have to figure out money. So what we're tied up right now is just the PGE report of understanding, you know, the connections for undergrounding. Like he said, the underground work is going to set us back probably a year, I believe he said. And so, um, Sheridan Road completed, it's more like the Sheridan Road underground. Completed or alphabet.
Phase one.
Yeah, phase one, or significant, maybe Sheridan.
That to me is an unrealistic target.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good way to put it, phase one.
We could have Sheridan Road as one for undergrounding. I mean, maybe by twenty twenty five, have Sheridan Road funding, um, determined?
Determined, yeah.
Yeah.
That's probably. I was gonna say, much, it just didn't seem logical.
Yeah, I do, really quickly, we are going to have these on a, uh, civil west is going to split the cost to get a nice, um, not a painting, but like a rendering of what the Sheridan Road design is, so that we can put that in here, because we have had quite a few people stop by and they wanna see it. And so it's got some really nice labels on it and stuff too.
Oh, that's great, so, yeah. Well, we have a chance to communicate with them during a council meeting before too long.
About the Sheridan Road?
Yeah.
The, the sentences, there's like two sentences, which is they're still communicating with P G E. But when they get through that part, definitely.
I'm gonna say, assuming. Everything gets put underground based on what we've decided, kind of some sort of rendering.
Yeah, they will come back to you, um, as soon as they're done with the P G E to give a report, because they'll do an updated cost estimate at that point about really what the undergrounding cost is gonna be. But we do have the rendering, um, it's already done, uh, rendered. Painted, I don't know what the method is that the artist uses, but, um, that is, that's being, that's on the way.
Yeah.
One thing that they did for us is even when they get the wires underground is the poles are still gonna be there for a while. And based on what we've seen from the rendering we saw, there weren't any poles there. He said it could take a couple of years just to get rid of the poles.
Sure.
So, you know, finding the funding is gonna be tough, but getting the whole project completed, I hope I'm still around when that happens.
Funding identified. It's okay, all right. Okay. So now we're onto the goal two. Ensure a safe and resilient community, developing Stony Mountain reservoir, drinking water access and hydroelectric opportunity. So the metric is to apply for grants and loans, and the second, and the second is, uh, publish Stony Mountain history and current progress on the project. And we really have published the Stony Mountain history.
Yeah, we've heard it.
Yeah, and so we published that in the paper, gave it to all the councilors, gave it to the representatives from Selina's Berkeley and Wyden's offices, and that's pretty, uh, anybody who could possibly, uh, read, want to read that, so anyway, I think we did that, if we wanna cross that out.
I think you have a question.
I was, I was gonna ask you, honey, what's our first step on Stony Mountain?
Well, so finishing the water master plan.
Master plan.
The water master plan, and then, um, creating, and maybe that should be on here, Laura, is creating, um, oh, doing a Stony Mountain reservoir facilities study is really the next step, um, and hopefully that, you know, will be done early twenty twenty five. But I think it's publish Stony Mountain history and current progress on the projects. I actually think instead of the word publish, it needs to be something like continually giving the public information about it, so that it doesn't lose traction and people, you know, you never know who you're gonna hit with the next newsletter or the next bulletin where you don't know who read it before, you know what I mean? So we just need to keep the education, public education and outreach rolling, because if there ever isn't chance, I don't know what this looks like, but I'm saying if there's ever a need for funding and you have to go to the voters and ask for that, then the, it always, votes always go much better when people feel like they've been educated for a long time and understand the need. So I think it's maybe continuous education to the public or something along those lines, and that's such for you to decide what you want written there. Okay, that's my idea.
All right, that sounds good, and that, that can happen too, there's a lot of information about that. Okay, so then, uh, our twenty twenty five target is applications for funding on board designs. Okay, so, um, the next one. Really kind of threw it for a loop, it says partnering with other agencies to house community members experiencing homelessness, and so, um, I fear that having that sentence in there is going to make our committee go wild.
That's what I thought.
I can, I can, yeah, cause it, it says that, so I don't know why, I'm sure there's a good reason why it says that, but, you know, we've said repeatedly, we are not building shelters or ponds or cabins or anything like that. What we're doing is working on a resource center, and so, yes, Roxie.
I agree that we probably don't want this as it's worth it, but I do think we should put in, um, working towards a resource center and doing other items to help the homeless, but not providing shelter.
The way I think that kind of changed it on mine was partnering with other agencies to provide services.
Or assist, partner with other agencies to assist community members experiencing.
Like social services or human health and resource services?
Yeah, like everybody that we may have, we hope to have anyway participating in our resource center that can help with everything from electricity bill to finding a job to getting a hair.
We'll leave the metric down below that, states identify agencies for partnership and begin drafting for services.
For resource center maybe.
Yeah, so that was, we're following.
That's what it sounds like, just resource there, that sounds like build a houses, the line above that looks like, oh, yep, you're building houses.
Yep, yeah. And so. So. So that, the, the, the council has said that they're not gonna support that, and so we don't want to get people stirred up with, you know, the idea that we have been dishonest or are not forthright about that, so, no, there's no shelter being considered anywhere. We are trying to develop a, a resource center where we can get people the services that are available to them and connect them with that, so. Hopefully, you know, find their way through, maybe even, you know, finding a job or help with the light bill, or it could be any of those things, but not building a shelter. Okay, so we're gonna, how about, do we agree to change that to partnering with other agencies to, what, what was the word?
To assist.
To assist.
Community members experiencing needs to be changed too. It's spelled wrong.
Okay. So we'll.
Okay.
Okay.
And the services don't have to be just for unhoused.
Yeah.
No, you're right, it just.
Just want to reach out to anyone that is asked.
Services.
Or community services.
Yeah, or social services.
Community services.
Yeah, absolutely, that's the idea, like, you, you know, you're temporarily having an issue, you know, we can find you some groceries and, you know.
Okay.
Okay, so we got that taken care of. City has a memorandum of understanding with identified agencies, I think we're tackling that through the resource center. Or we're about to.
We have to pass courts.
Yeah. And agencies providing services to unhoused community members, is that the same, the same thing, uh, that we, that we just talked about, just?
Yeah, I think this is like in action, it's happening. So you have this, you've established an M O U and then it's happening, there, an action that is going, so instead you can just say agency, you know, the resource center is operating. Okay. All right, updating the charter, what, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, only targets say twenty twenty five. Are we talking about the first January twenty twenty five or the thirty first December twenty twenty five? It's a whole year's worth of time in there, what are we talking about?
It's a target, it's just a target.
Sometime during that hundred.
Okay.
That's, that was the true, I just wondered about, that's like all our targets say twenty twenty five, it's like, boy, the first of January is gonna be a pretty fantastic.
That'd be great. Okay. So then, let's see, updating the charter to support community demand for safe and reliable city services. Hold work sessions with the city manager and city attorney to identify needed changes. City council meetings to review changes and council approval for public vote. And there's a commutability communication plan for charter change. Okay, so this, this all pretty much says, we're gonna work on the charter and we're gonna make the necessary changes for that.
But I still think we should combine the two charter bullets to goal two and then add parks on goal three. Cause on goal three, there's a charter, um, initiated charter review and amendment process. Which is the first.
Oh, I see that one.
Yeah, so I.
I think you can.
Provide those two.
These are separate, oh. Goal two is to ensure a safe and reliable.
That's a mistake.
And goal three is to increase community capability.
Laura, do you see that? It's the last goal listed, oh, I'm sorry, it's the second to, no, yes, second to last goal listed on goal two. Or, and then.
The strategy.
Yes.
Yeah, they have it in both, they have, they have it in both, both places, um, so, to, I think the question is, can we combine it? Sure. Um, and you could have it in goal two, uh, and you could add that parks language. You could also, because you work very, very good in laser focused, um, you have three goals, you could add one more goal for parks, but I, I agree with, um, uh, I can't, I don't remember which answer, what's this, that this, but yeah, but you could put it, and it does belong in goal three, so you could put that parks strategy in goal three.
Okay.
Okay, so leave the charter review one in three and put the, and if we send a goal with parks, put that there too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Combine the charter one in goal two and add parks to goal three.
Oh, okay, so this is another.
Parks is a big, I mean, there's, that's a big one.
Um, so Laura, you will come back to the council with an update, right, for them to review, and so Laura, I'll just put those together for you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I took pretty good notes, but, um, I will, I will connect with the Ivan and just make sure that I have all these in hiding, make sure I have these wording changes. Exact, cause I, as I'm writing down the hill, sometimes I was cutting out a little bit, so especially on that last one, I have partnering with a, a, a agent. I'll, I'll need that language will clear from you, so.
Okay.
That's all.
I think Ivan and I talked it pretty well.
That'd be useful.
Oh, now you're breaking it up.
Okay, should I separate twenty eight?
Yes. That's a good question. That's one she'll bring back.
Oh, okay.
And I'm not taking a look at it again.
Okay. So updating the transportation plan and invested improvements, the metric is review progress on transportation plan, update improvements. For example, Sheridan Road sidewalks and potholes. That's what's fun. And that, our goal for twenty five is to, I mean, twenty five is to update our transportation plan.
Would you mind considering adding an additional thing? I was talking with public works staff this morning, and I found out that the city of Sheridan has never had a, I got a number of calls, a street inventory, and that's something that I have found to be very helpful, and so companies have a company or will, will go out for a bit, but essentially they come in and they do a, a surface rating of each, like, I think it's either two or three blocks, um, of pavement that the city has and that the city must maintain, and then they assign, um, a rating, like, red, it's terrible, yellow, it's falling apart, or green, it's okay. And then it's, it's just a really fabulous thing, and some other time we can talk about all the details of it, and I can show you other ones that have been done. But I first learned about it with the city of Carlton and have since done it, and it's a very great budgeting tool too, and it's very great to communicate to the public of why certain roads are getting improved, and then for them to know when their street is that.
Yeah.
So I think that, okay, so.
That would fit in as a bullet ground or an updated transportation.
Yeah.
Yeah, inventory, a street inventory, it's like a street pavement inventory or something. Like, we don't figure out if they're officially possible.
There's this budget for that, and that's impossible working.
Yeah, full budget for that, there, yeah, there are like a couple thousand dollars, I think, to have done. Everything is.
Yeah.
I mean, it'll be worth that. It is, um. You get all kinds of charts, and then your engineers can help to enter the information, or public works, and then they'll tell you, like, you know, this road has this many years left, this road is complete, not worth the effort, let it continue to fall apart, but if you do some surface treatments to these ones, then you'll maintain them for much longer, I don't know.
A very big number, you should have a plan and. They do all the street located within the city, and, wow, yeah, that was.
Yeah, I thought you got, thought Sheridan had done one, and then I was asking for it today, and they're like, what? No.
Okay, all right, so goal three, so we say we're gonna go away with that. And so we're gonna go to enhancing communication with community members, I think that's important. Determine communication that works for the city and set up an analytics to measure how and when information is accessed and what audiences, um, are accessing. Direct community members, uh, to tools for information and engagement, and then, like I said, we did the Stony Mountain, uh, history, but we could. Yeah, that's a good one, yeah, but we could, we could continue with that and, um, and then add progress, cause I think that's what people really want to know, uh, how's that going?
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
How about publish infra, infrastructure, help me here, progress, so that would include street stuff, that would include Stony Mountain. That way people know what's going on with the streets and the water and sewage and everything, so. We said.
Bluff it all together?
Yeah, publish, and, and I have a hard time saying that word, cause I'm gonna.
Infrastructure.
Saying you, progress.
Instead of something.
Yeah, that way we can cover everything.
Everything we, that would be also along with, if we have progress.
Yeah, cause we're gonna wanna watch that pretty carefully.
I think you have that listed though, we're.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, use media and blackmail, beer boards, social media, the city website in town, and town hall meetings to communicate. Okay. And always do, if somebody has a, um, motivational ways or things that they've seen that are effective, let us know.
Pretty much an information desert as far as getting information out to people, despite all that was there. And I give that information.
Yeah, so right information.
Yeah.
You know, here's a thing that, you know, I kind of thought about, so a community tool resolves from, um, city social analytics, attendance at city sponsored events, feedback from groups, indicate, um, that information is getting to a variety of groups and audiences in the community, and I'm sure we all do, but I mean, I go to a lot of meetings every week with different people representing different facets of the community, and, um, that's a great way to communicate. So I wonder if we might just do something like just take a few minutes, um, every once in a while and just everybody's, let's just talk about that for a few minutes, who you're reaching out to, so we'll know what meetings you're attending and things like that, so that we kind of know if we have it covered or not, or, uh, hey, will anybody go to this thing over here? You might go to something at school and you could tell us about that, and, and then we know that, you know, like, as counselors that we're reaching out and uncovering a variety of people in a vi, a variety of events, and then they can just kind of update each other once in a while to make sure that, um, you know, if anybody has ideas of how we can, you know, actually reach out further, different things we can go to, or, you know, I think that might be an idea to add to our communications. Okay, creating a plan for community buildings, so it says apply for grants, determine what facilities are needed, community meeting space, libraries, senior center, public works and council chambers. And it says we will get input from the community about this, and create a master plan for facilities that identifies possible locations, rezone if needed, create R F P with costs to construct public works facility. Okay, and our target is to adopt master plan for community buildings, public works building would be under construction. Any comments on that?
I think that might be a little optimistic. Even under construction, since we have no location yet that we're considering, nor do you know the cost of what we might want to construct. Are to have that as a target, have it under construction in twenty twenty five.
Just add Bravo Bank.
There's a lot of.
I'm sorry. Okay.
I think it's important to have that on our goals.
I agree, it is, it is, it is, oh, okay, you see that twenty twenty five target, it's like, wow.
Who's that be? It would do everything. Okay, so on this next page is, what's next, putting the plan into action, and, and how we're gonna track ourselves, and, uh, monthly meetings, quarterly, twice a year, annually, and, and so that we know that, you know, once we get this all ironed out and we get back to the final, then I think it's important that we do figure out our action items and track what we've done, and, so that we know that we're staying on track. Um, so that we know that we're staying on track, yes, Jim?
And reading the monthly, quarterly, twice a year, annually. Uh, and annually, uh, only one, is the only one that says, uh, it's shared online for public access. It sounds like for the whole year, we don't say anything on, online until we get it all done. And I would, for monthly, quarterly and twice a year, we let everybody know what we've come up with rather than saving until the end. And then, well, here you go, here's everything we've done. And like, oh, when did all that happen? Oh, you know, last quarter. I don't know, but, you know, that's part of our problem, I think, as a city is a lot of people don't know what we're doing. And so they fill in the blanks with whatever they come up with. And I'm gonna give a percentage, but a lot of times it's wrong what they decide we're doing. So if we do this monthly, quarterly, twice a year, annually thing, let's put it out to the public and, you know, hey, here's what we're doing.
I, I think, yes, I agree with that. But I think it's the formatting that we're really thinking about. So we're kind of thinking about something kind of snazzy at the year end. But you're right, you know, we do need to get better at like telling people our successes and the things that we've accomplished. So we can do that with a short report. And or a grid or something like that. And the, you know, they come out in the council, where are you doing some of that, you know, in our council packets? And so, um, yeah, maybe we just need to really have a better tab or something even on our website that we can develop. But, um, I think that is, I'm totally good with doing more reporting about our progress, because our staff does do a lot of work. Um, but the annual one will be the fancy and the oral presentation and the look back. We're all good with that.
That makes sense to have.
Snazzy every.
Have a, have a grand, see, look, we've been telling you, we saw, well, here it is, we did it.
Yes. Grand, yeah, okay. Well, hopefully we will meet our goals and we'll be tracking that all along. So, you know, each month we'll know, I mean, that's a good thing about that, is that this month, okay, well, we did meet our goals. Or we didn't, so we better scrubber up next month, you know, so. Yeah. Oh, and Rusty.
I don't know if this is the time to bring it up or not, but, uh, a few years ago, we put money in the budget for a reader board. And that's an opportunity, I think, to get message out. We're probably not gonna be leaving city hall right away, so, um, I think, what do you think about that again?
I agree.
I think it was five thousand dollars before you got here.
Oh, well, before I got here. I know that Mayor Rich, former Mayor Rich Cox had an idea for somebody he thought may have had one for sale. I remember that thing about, but I don't know about the money part, if it was before me. But yes, that's Yvonne's. She would love to see an electronic reader board similar to what the school has. Bigger. Bigger.
Yes, bigger.
We have more than.
Better than kale. All right. I think, I agree with this entirely, because I think that's what I'm hearing mostly from people, is that they don't know what we're doing. And they don't know, like, the survey. I didn't do the survey, so we need to be more transparent about every step, our, you know, process.
Okay, so is there any other comments on this strategic plan or can we, uh?
It was.
Is that about, does that cover it for everyone and was everyone?
I think I'd like to hear, Laura, did you, uh, agree with how we decided to put things, is it gonna work the way? I mean, you're the one that helped put this together and helps us get things done. What did you think of what we just did to your goal?
Uh, A plus. I'm sorry. A plus, I think you showed remarkable restraint. I thought, oh man, okay, here we go. But no, I thought what you did was fantastic and just, and good memories given, you know. It's been, uh, a couple of months and some major holidays and, uh, snowstorms between, you know, like your last meeting. So, A for effort, um, and I look forward to seeing you on the twentieth, so it's gonna be good.
Great. Well, thank you so much. You know, one thing we didn't do is put the parks thing. We didn't say, do we wanna add the parks? And if we do, where?
On goal three.
So, can we review the parks thing a minute? So, we still have the, just, I don't need any, I think, but I know over on South Side Park, uh, we had the. It's like nine hundred and some thousand dollars between the grant and, and our math. Like voluntary labor and those asphalt chips we have with public workers and things like that. Okay, so that was pretty well covered, right? As far as progress on the South Side Park, we don't need any more money for it. It's kind of moving along, would you say? Oh, we can always use more money. I mean, uh, park and recreation committee member Wendell Cunningham has identified an amphitheater.
Oh, that's great.
And there's no funding for the amphitheater. So, um, I would say that, so on page forty eight, I gave you an idea just to use of. Possible adding goal three, adding to goal four, which would include increased community livability. So the strategy invests in shared parks and recreation. Metric, update Sheridan master park plan, which is big with the park and recreation committee. That's what a lot has inspired, conversation has been inspired out of that. And in the next, hopefully in this budget cycle, coming to twenty four, twenty five, there'll be approval of a park master plan. Or funding, or we can, we're gonna really try hard to prioritize some grants and make that, because it's really needed. Um, apply for the state forestry department grant for the flood level statues at Chestermore Park. We really wanna be able to do that. And we're gonna work closely in partnership with the Sherney revitalization movement. Um, commit a cop sign change for parks for incorporation of the highway eighteen B site. It should be plural states. And zone change for existing parks. Some of the parks are zoned commercial as it is, and they, they should not be. They should be zoned public. And, um, and also, we don't have some of our park land included in the city. And so we would really like to see that, so that it becomes more available for usage. Cause right now, it's just done for exclusive farm use. And so, that's what that is. Uphold our commitments as per the Yamha River Access Steering Committee Agreement form, which I. I'll send that out to you tomorrow, so you can see that. But that's the whole down at the, not Mallow, Morgan. Morgan Street Park, being able to get the non-butter rice boats in and out of the river and having that access. And partnering with all those other agencies, you know, for everybody to get in. So that's what that is about. And that's really in action. And then the targets would be to complete the state, I should have had the name of the grant. I don't remember what the name of the grant, but the state grant, uh, park, or. State parks grant for the South Side Park. And we're well on our way to do that, um, so hopefully that will be done in time. Complete cop plan and zone change for parks. Apply for grants to update the shared master park plan. And provided outreach, obtained funding and supported the Yamha River Access Steering Committee. And Laura and I did this together.
Good job.
I don't know if there's anything you have questions about or anything.
What about?
What about eighteen B, the Little League?
Yes, so the first step for that is to get that into the city.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
So we really have to do that, that's that one. Do they have anything about dog parks list?
Well, yeah, the dog parks aren't on here, that's what I, I didn't do my notes to.
So I will, um, work with Laura on adding something about dog parks.
Okay. Three dog parks.
Yeah.
So I think eighteen B is in the urban growth boundary area?
No, no. See the blue dotted line around the edge there?
I see that far.
Oh. Uh, behind you. So, uh, it's not in there. And so that's the work. And that process takes a while.
That's what I was thinking, that it would. So we just renewed that contract for three years, so it would be at least that long anyway, right?
Well, it's a very legal process, yes. And then it can be in the city, it can be in the city, it can be in the UGV and still be used for a park. All this is saying is that it will be zoned for a park whenever the opportunity is there. You don't wanna not be working on that there. Okay, that makes sense. Good, okay, that worked forward. And as long as we're doing it. Yes, long and arduous. So, yeah, if you're doing it for your other parks and doing the rego, as long as we're doing it.
These are the areas you were talking about, this is seventeen acres and this is the ten acres, is that correct or not?
The ten is in there, but there is a seventeen, and then there's two straddling the opposite side of the road. That the city owns with the middle.
Yes, that's the answer to your question.
Okay, so then I guess what we need to decide is, um, is the council in favor of adding, um. Um, this about the parks to, uh, goal number three?
I think, yeah, definitely.
Let's just get a consensus here in favor of that.
Yeah.
And we're gonna add UGV growth boundary for the rest of the city as long as we're working on this.
Well, we sure could, Laura, and I could talk about adding.
I'm just saying, as long as you got all the numbers and books in front of you.
Yeah.
Okay, we, we can't ignore that. And we can't put it off either.
Seems like that's a bit cheating, like with the. Updating the charter.
And if there's community. Yeah, so Laura, I'd now work on something about that and put that in. That's right, in both of our wheelhousees, I would say.
Okay, and can, could we have a. Um, meeting on that?
You will, on the twentieth, yeah, she'll be here.
Okay.
Oh, you mean about the expansion?
Yeah.
Oh, when we get there, yes. That's twenty twenty five, go on.
Honest, that's what I was thinking. I'm like, I think you might wanna expand, you know, your end date here to twenty twenty six. You're gonna take that off.
Yeah, we can just have initiate at that point, so.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Start. Any other questions on this, or we will move on to the, um. The tracking list?
Thank you, Laura.
Yes, thank you, Laura. Oh, we have to do this. Drive safe. Thank you.
Okay, Jim's a schedule.
Yeah, that's, that's page fifty nine.
On fifty nine, okay.
Yeah, this is, you know, uh. So the schedule, this is more or less the schedule for our work sessions. And so we want these to fall in line with our goals. But, uh, you know, so that, um. We can discuss what our goals are, we can make plans, how, you know, how we're going to execute those goals and who's gonna do what. We need to have all those things on track. So, uh, but then also, things always come up. That's, that's kind of difficult to, um, to track, to map out the work sessions like six months in advance. What was, I'm, uh, Yvonne, what was the other thing we were talking about that needed to be, needed to be considered in this?
Well, what, just, you know, like when there's, you, you, you go into budget season and things kind of start to jump. In front of what you may have scheduled for a regular work session, discussion may not happen, because. There might be some big thing they wanna purchase and I want someone to come in and, yeah.
So I'm, okay, good. I was just, um, but what would be nice is thinking about some of the goals, just like you said. And flopping some of these in there. So, you know, the charter is gonna be a big, huge conversation. So maybe one of the work sessions could be talking about how you're gonna break that down. Or what that looks like, that process. And so, I don't know, you know, if it's so comfortable putting it with a date, but that's one of the things. I think you, um, will want to, you know, one of these, uh, improve business recruitment plan. So you're, we're gonna need to have a good, hearty conversation on business recruitment strategies. You know, that's another one on here. So if you wanted to put this off and go home and look at these goals and sort of kind of plot things in, that is what we're really just looking for. The people coming work here to have that conversation, that, and that. All right, well, what if we go ahead and, and pick the topics for the work sessions with the idea that they may change or. Something should come up. Jim?
Um, I was thinking, you mentioned, we've got a list of things we wanna do or need to do. I want you to want to, I don't want to be the carrot.
Yeah.
But, uh, so in our regular session above the regular, you know, NA is what we're doing. Doing what we're doing. And then look at the list of things that need to be done and choose in our regular session, what's gonna come up in our work session. Rather than trying to put them all in here, oh, cheese and shit with that, up near the top when, you know. It would be easier to have a list of, of projects that need, we discussed and care of and then plug them in accordingly after you.
Yeah, it's a, I get it. Well, people, and when you go to the next page on the project tracking sheet, uh, you know, there's another thing. There's things on there that have been there since twenty one. And our short term is two years, our long term is forty years, and some of those are going close to the end of the period, yes?
Um, I was gonna say, if we're talking about the agenda. Um, I, um. Might be unavailable the fourth. I can try and join by Zoom, but I won't be here. I'm gonna be at work, training for work.
Oh, okay, so which one's that?
Uh, March fourth, but I should be able to join on Zoom, but, uh, just depend.
Okay, thank you.
I'll give you two sessions, um. I'll be able to make it to the next regular session. I will try and zoom in, I don't.
Okay.
But I will not be here, I won't just do that. See what Laura has to share in this, so I can try to zoom in.
I'll share on the twentieth of February.
Not my choice, but my fourth.
Well, that's great, I love that. So, okay, thank you, hopefully. All right, so. We could go through here and set up these, if you guys want to, set up these workshop topics. Just knowing, so. Do you want me to try and do that? And put it in the, in the twentieth packet and see what you think?
Yes.
Yes.
Cause like I know when some of this stuff will be done, like the ma- water master plan report and Sheridan Road. And we'll have the engineers come all at once, like you did before and do all that. We're very, very close to having a solid plan for the Hebert Memorial Plaza, like it is, very, very close. Yeah, so that's very exciting. Um, so just let me go through this if you want, then, and that would get my feelings hurt if you decide to.
That sounds like a good, no, I think that sounds like a great plan.
Okay.
I like the idea of raising that.
This clearly needs to be, you know, correct.
Well, especially, but now that we have a foundation, it will make it much easier. And then the other things that we, you know, that will come up, generally, we can just put those on the agenda and discuss those too. So it's not like we can't talk about it if it's not on today. But yeah, I would like to go through the project tracking sheet and, um. So, and, and just see where we're at. So city water needs to be done with, uh, water master plan, you know, that's important. That's at Oregon Hospital Authority, so it's very close. Okay, so that would be A. And we say it's very, you know. Okay, and the next one is selling bulk water outside the city limits. Should we just put that one to, um. Twenty twenty six?
You know, Stone Mountain?
We, you know, with everything going on with Stone Mountain, do we want to do that before we get working on that project or not? I don't know. I.
I think we were hoping that a private, um, person would do that. And there was some discussion with two different businesses and one of them said no, and then I can circle back. Cause I think that, um, the Iverson family had been considering that too.
Well, that's right. And you know, I think that's a kind of important, you know, I had calls last summer for, do you know where I can get new water? You know, because it was, you know, so home dry and.
We have to be very careful too in the summer about how much water we have.
Yeah, yeah, so. So is the idea to get this water from the Stone Mountain reservoir?
Water? But it's not treated at this time, so you can't use.
Not reservoir, I thought, I meant, I meant the, um.
The springs?
Yeah.
The springs really dry up during the summer and just provide just a little tiny bit. And then we rely on the Yamha River during the summer months. And as we all know, we got that, um, information in the mail talking about how there's less water this last year.
Yeah.
We need to be very careful about this during the summer months when people really need it.
You know, that's what I think we should do. I think it's a great idea and, uh, I should do it when we can, but maybe will we get further along with, uh. Okay, so let's, all right, let's change that to long term. And so that makes the, so let's change the year then to, uh, this year to twenty twenty four and go along with that. And that first, that work?
For selling bulk water?
Yeah.
Change it to twenty twenty.
And then we'll further along with this other, okay, let's do it.
Well, I look, you know, I took a long look, this, we've got a lot of short term projects, but, um. I don't think we did only. I don't think we did only short-term projects done in the short term of less than two years, and I gave it, I started with January twenty twenty-four, put it in January twenty twenty-six. You top, uh, short-term projects, one, two, three, four. And the top four, um, short-term projects are, those dates are well passed, we need to either decide new dates, or, you know, pick them again.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's because this list hasn't really looked at that close, and if you look, put it down at, uh, six point one, twenty-two, the research cost for a full-time planner, that says fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
So let's do, let's keep going through these, and let's figure out what we think we can do, and let's update it. So, the next one is the meter showing the river water level, so we were just talking about that tonight. And so do we, do, what do we need to accomplish that, like, do, are we looking for, uh, the grant money for that?
On March twenty-first, the grant opens up, and so I'll be working with the shared revitalization committee and C REACH to do, um, an application for the grant, the statuary that we had talked about.
Do you believe we can accomplish this in two years?
Yeah, as long as we get the grant.
Okay, well, and then we would.
If you don't want to come back.
Okay, so I'm gonna put.
I'm gonna see how we're gonna do that.
Should we read, read it to today and then just put short-term? That's what I was gonna do, I, yeah.
This really should have probably been explore how-to, because that took a while to get to, and I mean, there has been traction made on it, but as far as like, putting the meter in?
No.
But figuring out the best way to accomplishment, I mean, there's been a lot of work Tyler's had to do, just at looking at the easements for that ditch, you know, that needs to be covered up. That will be a little part of this too.
Okay, so we put in the, the date call, I'm just putting twenty twenty-four for that one, and that, we're trying to have that done by twenty twenty-six, and if things go wrong, we'll just, I'm gonna discuss that and either take it off or cross it off. So, okay, the next is the employee handbook update, and this, yeah, and you know what, I was thinking, I could type that, and then you guys could make your revisions, is that, if that's the reason, then it's not.
That's not the reason, no.
Okay.
Uh, we keep having other HR concerns that keep showing up in different ways, and so that has recalibrated the recommendations from CIS, I would say. So it is, they want us to use their, their template, so it's not about typing.
Okay.
It's about implementation.
I saw the, the book.
And about union.
Okay.
So we have opened up the union contract, uh, was it this Monday or last Monday? No, today is Monday, it was last Monday, I was like, it's Thursday, okay, yes, so negotiations, the contract opened up.
Last Monday was?
Last Monday.
Yeah, did, was it Wednesday they all went to?
And then Wednesday they have their meeting, so this is all a part of that process will also help determine this process.
All right, so again, was, uh, it's the first column to twenty twenty-four, since, since it, that paper, right, twenty twenty-four.
And we have, we have tracked them, we have lots of things happening in that department.
Okay, so you think then that it would still qualify as a short-term, that we should be able to accomplish this by twenty twenty-six?
Yeah, yes, now that we get the union stuff out of, um, what, you know, out of negotiation and into fruition.
The Storm, Stormwater Master Plan, Elm Street Basin Review. Okay, that's in the works too, isn't it?
Yep, that's a part of, well, a part of a lot of things, but yes, it's.
Okay, so that's a long term, and so.
Switch it to in progress and leave it as long term?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, what, in progress?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because that's a part of what's also being worked out.
So the year on that one would be, if, uh, if we change the beginning of twenty twenty-four, like the, um.
Can I just, sorry to interrupt you here, quickly, there's two pieces to this, there's the Stormwater Master Plan, which has not been funded for, and then the Elm Street Basin Review, we have completed some of that with the Elm Hill Street project. So I guess we need to spend some time over the public works to kind of clarify.
Would you, would that work?
Cause it actually is, I think, two different.
I was just gonna say, do you wanna cross Stormwater Master Plan off here and just call that Elm Street Basin?
Yeah, and we need to add another, um.
Master plan.
Yeah, that one separated.
Yes, that, it's really two different things.
Okay, so separate.
And so the Stormwater Master Plan is need-to-do, and we need to have funding for that, and that's a long term. Should really be a short term, but I'm not sure about the funding for it at this point. And the Elm Street Basin Review is a short term.
Sure.
And in progress.
Okay, so that's twenty twenty-six. Okay, then the water master plan update, I know that's.
It was very close for that one.
So the twenty twenty-two is when that went in, so let's see, so, will it be then?
It should be done in a couple months.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so that'll be, that's.
Presentation, you'll need your comments, and then.
Shared running for event, we, we know those are.
In progress and long term.
So that's, that one's okay, I think, um.
Too long term, that would be long, long term.
Okay, so then the next one we have is research cost for full-time planner, and that's, that's been completed, hasn't it?
Yeah, we did do that, I'm gonna come to the city council soon enough with a couple of ideas.
Okay, can we just cross that, hold on?
Yes, I'll move it to the done list.
All right, then we have recreation space in Baka's Loop.
I don't even remember the discussion on that.
That's that area behind the houses and the senate, it was supposed to be the retention pond, Jim Anderson built that subdivision, that was his brush. It would make a great little park for the community, it's within that little circle that it touches.
Its own Baka's Loop?
No. It's a retention pond. It's never been used.
I don't think we wanna create a park there anyway.
You guys wanna cross that off? It'd make a nice little seasonal park for the people who butt up around it, if you know where it's at, you know where it's at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just very vicious.
Yeah, it's just about, it's actually a fire hazard, is what it is, but it'd make a nice little seasonal fitness area for people. Kind of like our river, it's your friend during the summer, and it's your enemy during the winter, I don't know how bad that fills up, because it's never been used properly.
I think this is a legal project, really, yeah.
All right, let's, let's cross that one off for now, and then what we've done after that.
And then we cross on.
Like, the.
Please cross them off.
Oh, we're doing people here, we're just getting, you know.
Kind of frustrating, we keep looking at this stuff that we're running. Okay, so, and then we know the SBC fee increase will be on the ballot.
Yes, it is.
For twenty twenty-four?
We have to do all of our master plans first.
Oh.
For that part, we have to do our master plan, so we know how much we're asking and what we're asking for.
But we are gonna work on the charters, and we don't. So the water, the water master plan's almost gonna be done, so you guys take the wastewater master plan goes with that?
No.
No.
Different.
Well, she said all the wa- so wastewater, considering that.
We'll have to, the city will have to afford for all five of those master plans to be done, and I have expressed to the council before, I can really only handle like, one at a time, and then when another one gets in there, I can handle when we get really geared up and going, somebody else is driving it forward, then I can sprinkle on another at the beginning. These are huge staff commitments, and huge amounts of work, so we're doing the water master plan, that's where we started, because of the water rights, and the Shodan Mountain. And then we are doing some of the park recreation work, and that's for the parks plan, and that's only because of the park and recreation committees, we're tackling a lot of that stuff, and then it will be condensed into a plan. And then, we have to do stormwater, sewer, and streets, the transportation plans, so those are, I mean, this is, of course, five years of work.
And then the conference of funds.
And then the conference.
So, so, uh, we're on CDC fee increases on the ballot, so are you saying we should, long term?
I think on whole is perfect.
On whole, yeah, okay.
The three goals, we don't forget about it, on whole.
I think we tackled still some time-placed manner tonight, I think we can cross that off, and, and, uh, know that the stuff is gonna work on getting that ready for the ballot.
But did you say that you were also going to couple it with one of the other options, number two, three, or four?
No.
No.
Oh, just not doing that all, and not having a.
What they were saying was just, should it, for some reason, go the other way, we should work on an ordinance that we would pass in that case.
So you do wanna have the ordinance just in case, so then I feel like you will be talking about time-placed and annual restrictions, cause you'll still need a doc.
You guys want that on there for organization purposes, I think, okay?
Yeah, don't mind, forget it.
All right.
Okay. The wastewater, we just.
I'll just put the ballot.
So wastewater, the status of probably being fiscal year maybe twenty-four, twenty-five. If then, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna work with the engineers and the public works staff to figure out how we, whoa, which ones are more important?
If you say like, need to do. I was gonna say, we have more needs to do than put a fiscal year timeframe, and then you've been long term.
Also take, okay, so that was wastewater, you wanna take long term on?
No, change the fiscal year, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four to just.
To be determined, the TBD.
The need to do.
Yeah, there we go, needs to do, thank you.
Yeah, or TBD.
TBD is better than need to do.
All right, and then we're onto the park master plan update. That's in progress?
Yep, I'm working with the park and recreation.
Okay, and that says, short term, which we have it done by twenty twenty-four, is that possible, or should we extend that a little?
Yeah, I thought we changed, I'll, I'll just start this between twenty-four, what I thought you were doing.
Well.
Oh.
I don't know that it won't be done by the end of this year or the beginning of next year.
So if we leave this, put the start date down there, it's twenty twenty-four, so you can probably, sure, turn it.
And do that to twenty twenty-six. That works. How about our emergency management plan?
Yeah.
Is that in progress?
Yeah, well, Deja had started, her name's not on here, but she, Kai, but Deja had been doing a lot of work toward this, and, um, going through the big giant binder that we have, and, um, so yeah, it's in progress, but we need, let's see, twenty twenty-four, so it'll be two years. I don't know that it will be completely done, but it will be definitely much with the next person, so this is a, a really big question during the, um, interviews. It's about emergency management work, so the person that gets hired is well aware that they need to take, take the ball and, what was I saying?
Right, right, right.
So, yeah.
Are we doing it with twenty twenty-six, and then we can always come back?
Yeah, we'll pleasantly surprise you.
So we changing it to today's date?
Yes.
So twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six, yeah, oh, okay. And then Civic Center, what is that?
Long term.
Well, that's your community, community center.
Can we write pie in the sky?
Or should we take it off and call it?
That one has funding places for some of that, so that's this one, uh, creating a plan for community buildings, so maybe that's really what I should say. Is creating a plan for community buildings slash Civic Center, because when you keep this kind of stuff and have this kind of stuff in, it's very, very good for grants. And that you're talking about, and so then when you apply for grants, you can always cite the meetings. Okay, so I'm changing, there's, there's funding for libraries, there's just, libraries.
So I've changed it to twenty twenty-four, and then create a plan for community building, and then it's in progress.
There's funding for senior centers too.
That would be wonderful, so should it be short-term or long-term though?
Well, it depends what it says, does it say building, or just adopt master plan?
It says Civic Center.
Okay, so it says, on this one, you have adopt master plan for community buildings, and that by twenty twenty-five.
They should agree.
Okay.
Yeah, they should both things, I think.
Okay.
So they're long-term?
Or short-term?
Sure, sure. Sure.
Master plan.
Okay, I think, okay.
All right, and, um.
How many master plans can you work on?
We, we can, we have an idea, just think it's time to update it, and then if, we can, we can revisit as time goes by, when things are actually coming together, so, public works facility.
Same.
Long term, I think.
Yeah.
So we're gonna put the date in, in twenty twenty-four.
Oh, maybe we need to prioritize some of the things for public works, I don't know if that'd be.
Well, you know, it's, it's a very large area to run through.
So, are we changing public works to long-term?
Yes.
I, I think that. So, yeah, public works.
I was wondering about this one, so it says Southside Park renaming and memorial area next, did we, are we still working to rename the park, or?
Well, the park and recreation committee, I think we all decided to get, they submitted something to you, it was a big fan thing, and then they had a whole bunch of public comments that came in. And then it was all decided that we would wait until we got further down to see what the park really looked like after all these. And then revisit that, and the park and recreation committee just, um, just reaffirmed that, like, it will be good once we get back into, once we see what the end of this looks like, right?
To get better, you guys.
And maybe to have at that point, um, a contest.
Okay.
But we want people to be able to see it, use the park a little bit, and then feel like that they can name it.
Okay, so we're gonna go, twenty twenty-four in the first column, and then we're gonna go, still short-term, but that first term would be twenty twenty-six, will that work? You think? Or do you have a little longer?
Yes.
You wanna go long-term?
No, short-term is just fine for that.
It prob- it probably by the end of this year.
Okay.
Well, the grant will be finished this late, like, November.
Here's another one, and I've been asking about this one recently, vaping bicycles, et cetera, on sidewalks, like, I was trying to tell me that it is, um, that's legal, and I said, you know, and, uh, I said, actually, it isn't, uh, the council, I, you know, long before I was here, but, and voted to put those signs up, and to not allow is it vaping, smoking, bicycles, skateboards, and on there in the, and it's, um, there's a sign in front of, is it Benny Hueys, I guess?
Is there the other sign?
Yeah, I remember the Buck Canyon.
Yeah, right into the Ashtray.
There's also one at the end of the bridge, on East Main Side, that you can't even read, it's a big sign, it's so.
But speed just seems to be more signage, or different signage.
But you know, I was kind of, you know, a couple, few years ago, I said, have, I asked, have you, the deputies, have you ever issued a ticket, or anyone else, and they said, no. And so, part of me says, if you're not gonna enforce it, why is it there, and there's people that think that we, that it is legal, and I thought, well, technically, it isn't. So, I don't know, what do you guys think about that situation, you wanna keep that like that, or?
Well, why?
We, so the ordinance was, um, suggested because we were concerned about kids on the streets, walking home, schools.
Yeah.
On the bridge, places, the, the litter from the, the cigarette butts.
Yeah.
Um, whatever, um, we knew that it would be difficult to enforce it, and obviously, that's what's happened. But it doesn't take away from the fact that it's still illegal.
Okay.
And I guess we decide to choose to insist that it gets enforced or not. There may be some extenuating circumstances, or something that is, something else that needs to be done in order to enforce it, I don't know.
Okay, Liz, what would your comment?
I don't remember, so sorry. I'm really getting tired, sorry.
Does anybody have a comment on this?
Yvonne, is that correct?
That's pretty much it, but, but the deputies say don't, um, it's not something to say, but, but it's not legal.
No, but if somebody hits somebody on the sidewalk.
I, I have myself personally walked on work time, been walking to the bank, and just at that corner, I literally had a kid just like, zipping along, I rounded the corner, and he was like, in my face, and his skateboard went between my legs.
Oh, my gosh.
So it came close where I could have gotten hurt pretty bad.
So I am telling you, it's just that they're two different topics. I think vaping and smoking should not be compared to riding a bike.
Uh, or a skateboard.
Or a skateboard, one feels, I know it's, can be dangerous, but it also feels healthy, like, we wanna encourage riding bikes and pedestrians doing things. And the other one is an unhealthy thing, vaping and smoking. And so I think that they're really two different conversations, because as a mother of a small child, we, I do not want my kids not riding like, in the street, right, so we go as a family downtown, and the little boys are on their bikes, you know, and I don't want, I mean, Beck's like a strider, you know, and I don't want him to be in the street, I mean, I'm walking with him, right, and what am I supposed to do, put him in the street, right? So just like, this needs to be explored, I think differently, the conversation, than vaping, no, we don't want that, but we don't want kids, little, riding bikes in streets either. So the safety factors are different.
Well, shared roads, and I have wide areas for carts and bikes and walkers.
And that will be great.
That.
And so then, when they come off of there, you're gonna wanna take them downtown, right, and so it's a different conversation.
And then you're.
The conversation, I'm still on the bikes and skateboards. On West Main, at the corner of West Main and Bridge, there's a business, two businesses downstairs in that building. One of the ladies that runs the business is handy.
One of the ladies that runs the business is handicapped. And she's had some really close calls with kids coming down on bicycles when she steps out that door.
That's your clients.
Pardon me?
They're going downhill for you.
I've jumped the other way a couple times there.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
I guess if they hit her, they'd be suing, I guess, I don't know.
I just think that bikes are a different conversation than vaping.
Okay, but we're still talking about both.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes, we're still gonna have conversations about both, but thinking that, of how you enforce them or what prohibitions are around each subject is different, I think.
Okay, go ahead. Well, first of all, you can smoke outside if you want to, so I don't know what there is to really regulate. It's inside of buildings that they can tell you not to do it. But if somebody wants to push their bike in front of my office, you can get off your bike and push it until it's safe for you to ride. Because otherwise, I've almost been hit by both of those. I'm not a mean person, but I could have just grabbed that skateboard and said, I'm taking that sucker and putting it in my office. So, I mean, if you wanna ride your skateboard, that's fine, but where you're going by businesses, you should probably carry your skateboard. And I've seen moms with their little kids, and the little kid on a, on a trainer thing is one thing, but we're talking about little kids who, you know, you just kind of walk your bike to the next station and.
So the rule says no bikes at all, even when you're walking.
Oh, okay.
No bikes.
On the smoking thing, I kind of remember, it should be like walking that way.
Yeah.
And I, it, you know, it seems like for a while we had, um, once it said not within a thousand feet of a doorway or something like that, which.
State law.
Oh, was it the state, okay.
Twenty five feet of any, uh, doorway.
Okay, cause I thought it kind of covered the whole town. And then, um, and then the councils went further to say, and so now that's an area, I believe. So it goes from like the high, or the school. What, down to like the American Legion? Is that?
Yeah, and then it's like.
At the T, in a T's little bit. Yeah, and I know on, on East West Main, it, uh, I know it goes to the end of the, the building where the bulletin board is. Yeah. It ended at the end of that building, and then where did it end on the other side?
Uh, it must not.
TJ's or?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it must be a lot about TJ's area, because then it was, it went into residential after that.
One block.
Let's see.
Was it one block?
Yes.
Okay, well, I just, I just, well, okay, but I just was kind of wondering, there it is, and, and people ask me about it, so, uh, it's been a while. Alright, so what do we wanna, do we want to discuss that and, uh, what are we?
There you go, work session, there you go.
Or do we wanna put it just on as an agenda item?
Either or.
Okay, let's do an agenda item on that.
I think we're gonna beat it up tonight, so.
You mean an agenda item for a work session, right?
Let's start with a work session.
Not a, a council meeting at ten fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I'm changing that to. Four, and I guess we'll just see it on here, alright. So I'm crossing those out, okay. Downhill Street Sewer Improvements.
Is that short term?
Doesn't, yeah. What's going on?
Yeah, I don't, I'd have to look at the grant agreement.
So it's in progress, um.
Whenever the grant agreement expires, I'll know.
When we run out of money. Alright, one oh six South Bridge, Hebert Plaza. And, you just said some good news, that Southwest has, well. If this is about the design, yes, if this is about the construction, I don't know. Okay.
I think it's just about both, so put it in progress, we're working on that, uh.
Okay, okay, I'm changing the first column to twenty twenty four, making it short term twenty twenty six, and we're gonna hope we're there, okay? And the RV parking code change.
That's done.
That's done, we can cross that off.
Yay.
And the transportation plan.
Let's change that to a long term now, because it's Sharon Road.
Alright, so.
That's amazing. Oh, Tyler, that's the, um.
Oh, yeah.
The preschool, the daycare, what's it called, preschools?
And start.
And Tyler researched that, and it is not included, so that's done.
It's, it's not what I.
Not a school.
It's not a school.
Oh, not a school.
Daycare sets are, are not included, are not determined as a school.
They're not, they're not.
Sadly, but you can cross that off. And I didn't do it, Tyler just.
That was the short, a short term. So you got all the luxury, Tyler, right?
It's not my key.
Yeah, mine isn't either, but, yeah.
I'd like to see added to this, finding funding for the full-time, one hundred percent total enforcement policy.
Yep.
I understand the funding problem, but when you can find it.
You know, and, oh, how about this, so we're all gonna be involved in the budget, uh, process here soon. And so that might be a time that we could really look at that and, uh, see, what we can live without maybe, because I guess that's paid out of the general fund, is see what we can.
I'd add it to the goal list.
It's made.
It could be short term.
Yeah, sure.
Add it to the goal list.
Okay. Alright.
This is a direct question for you, Heidi, uh, you prison, uh, last, means your court, you can at least look at that as a part-time HR person.
Yeah.
So if we wanna put that on this list or just, uh, waste your budget?
We, you can put it on there and we can knock it off in a couple of months.
We'll have to take some off.
There's room on the page.
Yes. Sure, ready.
Are you gonna put that on the, um, Sharon website, the city website? What's the name? Do I connect? Do you mind if I mention this? I've got two letters circulating around, but the letters that were in your email, one is for the C tech support.
Oh, yeah.
For the C, yes, the Barbara Roberts School, um, for them, the legislature, they're asking for five million dollars, and you had that letter to.
Slide, I said from.
The other, uh, letter is for the city of Sharon, for theirs, for the House bill that we're requesting support for Sharon Road. For the developers' portions of the public improvements required, so hopefully you have time to do that one too. The third announcement is, as we've been talking about the pro, um, projects that are going on at the Southside Park. We have closed the Southside side park starting today through the sixteenth. We're digging the subject take and it will be set over there, and so there'll be a big hole. And then we're also, um, digging up the holes for the vaults for the electricity, so more holes, which equals, you know, not good for people. So, we're closing the park for a couple of, um, for a couple of weeks, actually, to get all that work done. And that's out on our Facebook and on the reading, on the community, on our bulletin boards that we have. Okay, library, park. We are coming too late for me to talk.
I know, okay, and then I was getting late, but now it's time to prepare and also concerns.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we also have the audit presentation coming, he, we're scheduling with him, it'll either be your February twentieth or maybe your March work session, if you're open to having a presentation again at the work session. Okay, and then just an announcement, February is American Heart Month, and I don't know how many people know, but, um, heart health is what the women's greatest heart or health threat. So, make sure that you take yourself seriously and spread that to all the women in your family, that's the number one health concern for women.
Alright, any other concerns?
Concern is late. Just a quick one, uh, I was asked by a citizen, said she has not seen all the signs on the trucks identifying the same vehicles.
Um, there are three of them that are not magnetic, they're aluminum, I believe, and so we're doing stickers for those. But they, they should, all of them, not three.
So how many did we have in total?
Uh, sixteen trucks in total, yeah, so we're at thirteen and a half signs. This, make sure that they really are city trucks, because sometimes we get phone calls where people mistake city.
I know our little one hundred, that kind of one.
Nope, it's one of the Ford, it's the Ford that doesn't have.
Pardon me?
It's not metal. Yeah, that's one of the Fords, it's three forty.
Oh, okay. Aluminum.
Yeah.
We're gonna glue it on?
No, we have, like, we'll, we'll stick our things that are made.
Cool.
Oh, okay.
But there's only three, and that's one of them.
Cool, that's a solid point for me, that.
Okay, good. Any other concerns or comments? Do I have a?
Oh, I got one more.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
The learn to burn on Morgan Street, that was scheduled for January. And it's February.
This one over here, right?
Yeah.
They have not got back to me.
Okay.
So if you wanted to visit them, they're, they're, it's the one that we have this team. Yes, we do have to surplus it per, so we're gonna work on that for February.
Oh, okay.
But they have to be surplus. For the burning.